You're all set.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, good evening, everybody. I'm gonna go ahead and call the Bridgewater Town Council meeting to order is Tuesday, February 1st at 7:01 PM. If we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America.
Want you to just miss that. Okay, we just have a couple of condolences this evening. First, on behalf of the town council, our condolences is to the family of Herbert Wolfher upon his passing on January 15th, 2022. Mr. Wolfher served in the United States Navy during the Korean War. He served in United States Coast Guard Reserve. He was a lifelong member of the Bridgewater Lions Club, having been a Melvin Jones recipient. He taught at Bridgewater State University and was the sealer of weights and measures for the town of Bridgewater, West Bridgewater, Halifax, and Whitman. In addition to that, our condolences on behalf of the council to our assistant town clerk on the passing of her mom, Mary Ann Sprague, who passed on January 20th, 2022. She was a lifelong resident of Bridgewater and longtime employee of BSU. We could just take a moment of silence to recognize all those of past, all those veterans and first responders. Okay, as a reminder, this evening, this meeting is being aired live and recorded pursuant to Section 20 of Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during state of emergency. This meeting of the town council for the town of Bridgewater will be fully remote and accessible to the public through remote participation to the greatest extent possible. There'll be no in-person attendance permitted. Citizens who wish to tune in to the meeting may do so via Zoom or Facebook Live. So the first item on the agenda is approval of our minutes from our previous meeting on January 18th, 2022, entertain a motion to approve.
Sorry, Mr. Rushton, if I am.
Oh, yes.
I do have a quorum of my school committee here, so I just wanted to know if I could just open my meeting, just so.
Absolutely, go ahead. I apologize.
Thank you. I apologize. It's tough with all the Zoom boxes. I'm just calling to order our joint school committee meeting with the Bridgewater Town Council to order on Tuesday, February 1st, 2022, at 7:04 PM. I do have in attendance Mr. Michael Dolan, Mr. Timothy Fitzgibbons, Mr. Richard Florence, Mrs. Lillian Holbrook, Dr. Susan Pruwandowski, and myself as Chair of the Committee, Rachel King, and Mr. Derek Swenson, Superintendent of Schools, is also here. Let me make sure I do this. And I think that's everyone here.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. We appreciate you coming in this evening.
Mr. Rushton, if I could do the same thing with the Bridgewater Finance Committee?
Absolutely, go ahead, sir.
Okay, thank you. I would like to call to order the joint meeting with the Town Council Finance Committee and Bridgewater Regional School Committee at 7:05 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, first item on the agenda is approval of our January 18th minutes, entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Jim, Mr. President.
Yes, yes, sir.
Yes, since we have word that there has to be a change in it, shouldn't we just table it till next month and next meeting and get it corrected in the meantime?
Absolutely, we can do that. Okay, so make sure we're unsure of that one word.
I wouldn't, yeah, I wouldn't vote to table it. I would vote to continue it to a date certain.
Okay.
You went, obviously, the next town council meeting.
I make the motion to continue it to a date certain. Do I have a second?
I would second that.
Okay, any discussion? See a nun? Move for a roll call vote.
Mr. George?
I'm gonna abstain. I was not at that meeting.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry? Let me let him in. He's in there now. Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
And Mr. Columbotus? That's seven zero, seven in favor, zero against, and one abstained.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, announcements from the president. I have one that's from the senior center. After this recent storm and certainly any future snow events, there are many seniors who are unable to shovel themselves out and clear off their cars. The senior center is looking for volunteers to help out in these situations. Anyone that is interested can call 508-697-0929 for information. It is a great opportunity for any young adults looking for volunteer hours for graduation and confirmation. Okay, moving on to proclamations, we have none. Moving to citizens' open forum. Do we have any citizens wishing to speak during citizens' open forum? And Deborah, I apologize. I'm on an iPad. I am just moving through, trying to see. I don't see anyone with.
I do not see anybody either.
Okay.
Should be all set.
Excellent. Moving on, next item, E, appointments. We have none this evening. Next item on the agenda is hearings. First hearing is Order 0FY22-033, loan order for upgrade of wastewater treatment facility. At their meeting held on 1/24/22, the Budget Finance Committee voted two to one to recommend. The Finance Committee voted seven to oh to approve on 1/12/22. So go ahead and call the hearing, reopen the hearing at 7:08. And I would ask if there's any comments from the public. Any comments from the public, for or against?
I do not see any hands up.
Okay. Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing. It is 7:08. And entertain a motion to approve, and then we can move into a discussion debate if needed.
Motion to approve.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on the issue?
No.
I've got a couple of questions, a couple of questions.
Counselor Gallagher?
Oh, thank you. My on mute. Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple of questions, more than are follow-up to this. And first, I want to say is, you know, I respect the citizens of this town so much. And I am, though, a little disappointed that we've had now two opportunities at public hearings for them to come forward and ask questions, as we're gonna ask questions about this, this issue. Because this, this is where it all happens. This moment, and the moment we had two weeks ago, and the work that the Finance Committee did, and I don't know how many people from the public asked, attended their meetings to ask questions. And we had a Budget and Finance Committee meeting last week. And when the ratepayers open their bills and see the increase in their sewer rates because of this project, that's when they're gonna step forward and say, how did this happen? Well, it's happening now. This is how it happens. We're doing something that we need to do in the community. We have an elected town council. We have a subcommittee of the town council. And we have a finance, appointed finance committee that asks questions and debates this. So, having said that, I hope when those bills are open and people call us, if we're still on the council or new counselors that come in, will remember this moment and remember this time, because this was their chance to really ask questions. And so they understand why their sewer rates, from what we heard, are gonna go up. Go up about eighty-five percent because of this project. So, having said that, I have a couple of questions for either the town manager or, or the finance, finance director. This project was first brought to us in 2019, where we approved $32 million. And I understand now, three, four years later, the, the cost has gone up $9 million. And there actually is another community on the sell show going through the same thing. I did a little bit of research. There is another community that appropriated X amount of money. It wasn't quite three years ago, it was about a year and a half ago. But now they're, now they're being asked to increase $5 million more, not, so, I guess that's kind of the reality of it. And I'm not questioning the price. I'm, I'm just, have a question regarding the sewer rates. When we knew that this project was coming, was there any way to start putting reserves away at that time in incremental increases? So that when this cost came forward, that some of, some of the costs would be offset by reserves? And I know, Tony, you mentioned that you're using some reserves to offset this cost, and I think that's great. But is, was there a way we could have done some incremental increases? So to alleviate the, the big increases projected for the ratepayers?
So I'll, I'll start that off. Hopefully, you can hear me. My audio, for some reason, is flaring up. But Counselor, I will defer to Mr. Salvanti on that. But we did, we did provide some incremental increases which did generate reserves in the sewer enterprise. And we, excuse me, we will use that to offset a portion of the cost of the project, but I'll, I'll defer to Tony on a further explanation. You're on mute there, Tony.
Sorry about that. First part is the rates to go up, and that's why, one of the reasons we're able to achieve the approximately $2.6 million in reserves as of the end of FY21. Could, could that have been increased incrementally after seventeen to say nineteen? Yes, that could have. That's the short answer. We know that not, we're not going to be paying down this debt until sometime into probably 2024. So we will be looking, as I said at our last meeting, to make an incremental increase sometime early this spring. I will be giving the town manager my recommendation. He'll bring it forward to this body, and therefore the rates will increase a, a proportion of what they will eventually increase to. So we'll be able to build some other additional reserves over the next year to, to eighteen months.
And that will alleviate, you know, that will help alleviate some, a big increase in one, a one-time hit on the, on the ratepayers at some point, right?
Any reserves that we, any reserves that we build, short of enough to keep in there for their capital, other capital, like equipment, yes, will be used to offset the cost of this project.
So, but the intent will be to borrow the full 43 million? Or do you think you'll be able to borrow less once you, I know you got to show the regulatory agency, whoever that is. I know you have to show them that we appropriated the full amount, but is it a possibility you won't borrow that full amount? You might borrow less?
The, the estimate, the estimate right now in Phase One is to only borrow thirty-seven and a half million. I'm hoping to move that number down.
Okay. And I hope that, you know, the 6.6% of the
Forgiveness.
And the forgiveness amount, hopefully, we can get more from that. And whatever ARPA funds, is, is it your intentions to use some ARPA funds for this? I know it can be used for this.
At this point, at this point in time, the town manager and I have discussed where, what the use of ARPA funds would, where the use of ARPA funds would benefit the greater good. And we also have a water project, as you know, that's gonna be completed sometime this summer. And in fact, we would be looking to offset that cost because more users take advantage of our water system than sewer. But it would benefit the greater good in respect to any water or sewer rates.
Again, my, my point is, I think everybody hears it, is I'm concerned about the ratepayers, and I'm concerned about the day they open the bill. And then I'm one of them. Many of you are those as well. And it, I hope that there's a, not as much of a hit at once to the ratepayers when this first hits, and we do use the reserves to offset that. We don't have to borrow as much as we think we have to borrow. We'll get them more than 6.6% in forgiveness. And hopefully, some ARPA funds will be used. But I'm comfortable. I've done some research. This is not unusual, and there's other communities going through this. The cost is what it is. It's just that I think we need to, we need to be prepared for that day where the ratepayer opens that bill, and they're not gonna understand why. So I'm comfortable with this. I won't be comfortable opening my bill, but I'll be comfortable in supporting this. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
I'll just follow up on Dennis's point, which is, you know, this has been on five agendas, and I haven't heard any, any, you know, outstanding citizens talk about the price or performance or anything like that, and that always concerns me. But, you know, we did talk a lot in the Budget Finance Meeting about the, the cost, and Dennis brought up some big questions. And we talked about the, the possibility, if we delayed, you know, this vote tonight, if the possibility was that we get a cheaper plant, and there is no confidence that if we delay tonight's vote, that we would end up with anything cheaper. And there is, there are penalties coming down the road in, in, I think it's seven years, if we don't move forward and, and get the upgrades that we need in place for the, the pieces within the plant. So I'm hoping that this passes. I'm in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councils or any comments or questions? I don't see any, but if I could, to the town manager, would it make sense, or have we already done this? Since it's a targeted population that's using sewer, could we put something out in the next bill in, in an effort to prepare people in advance, almost like a flyer, sort of explaining the project in anticipation of really an incremental approach to raising the rates over the long term? Because this is Phase One. As we know, there's another phase, if we're calling something Phase One, that there's more expenses to come. But at least not for nothing, we've done a better job, if we haven't, in terms of communicating to the customers and, and allowing them a chance to prepare for that increase.
No, I think that's a, that's a great point, and we will follow up with that. I think putting a bill staffer in is a good idea. I think we want to make sure, however, that we are giving people solid facts. Right now, there's a lot fluid, and we can try to explain that, you know, in a, in a circular as well. But I want to, I want to make sure that we've got, you know, pretty solid estimates before we, you know, profess something. Because once we put it in writing, once we put it in a bill, you know, that, that's what people will refer to. But, but getting the information out there, absolutely. We'll, we'll push out as much information as we possibly can.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. I appreciate it. With all that, we have concluded the conversation on this, and we'll move for a roll call vote.
Certainly. Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souzer?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
And Mr. George?
Yes.
That's nine in favor, zero against.
Okay, moving on, licensed transactions, we have none. Moving to.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to take Item J out of order.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, okay, all those, we'll move for a roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
And Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero against.
Excellent, thank you. Appreciate that. Moving on to discussions. First item is joint meeting with the town manager, Finance Committee, and School Committee Chair, which obviously we have entire school, or most of the school committee here. We appreciate everyone's presence this evening. So I think I will, maybe if the town manager would like me to defer to the town manager first, and we'll move from there.
Certainly, Mr. President. I think, obviously, this is a little bit later in the year than we usually do our joint meeting, which, which actually works out pretty well. I think we've gotten some indications from the state about where our, at least some preliminary numbers from House One on where our state aid will be, and I think the schools have some idea where their state aid will be as well. So I think this is a unique opportunity for the council to hear the schools' needs, what, what the schools, you know, financial needs are for the upcoming fiscal year, and, and the council has the opportunity to hear that. And I have the opportunity with the Finance Director to just sort of lay a little bit of groundwork, which, which I can certainly do, you know, after the discussion. But that's, that's really it. I think this, these sessions are quite helpful to get the school committee together, to get the council together, and the Finance Committee, who ultimately will hear, hear the, the budget presentations and, and the budget proposals for all of our town departments, including the schools. So, so with that, I would simply turn it back to you to open up the discussion.
Okay, excellent. I think next, what I'd like to do is, excuse me, I apologize. Next, defer to the School Committee Chair, Ms. Rachel King, for any discussion you'd like to have representing the school or Superintendent Swenson.
Thank you, Mr. Rushton. And I, again, I want to thank the Bridgewater Town Council and FinCom for inviting us here today to this meeting. We've had a great start to the year, and we're really happy to be back full in person, even with all of the current guidelines. I know our staff and admin and nursing staff had really been taxed with everything, but they are so happy to just be back in the classrooms with all of our students again this year. So as you know, we are in the middle of our budget season. At our January 26, 2022, School Committee meeting, Mr. Swenson presented his proposed fiscal year 2023 budget, and the School Committee voted in favor of accepting that proposed budget and referred it to our Budget Subcommittee. So the Budget Subcommittee now will review that the next couple of meetings that we have scheduled. And we do have our School Committee Public Budget Hearing scheduled for March 9th, where we'll present what the, the Budget Sub has reviewed and what we're going to present to the public for public comment on that time as well. I do have Mr. Swenson here that can speak to specifics of the budget that he's presented, as well as Dr. Susan Pruwandowski is here, and she is our Budget Subcommittee Chair, if you have questions.
Awesome, thank you. I appreciate that. And before Superintendent Swenson begins, I would just, on behalf of the council, thank you, the School Committee, certainly Derek and his staff and the entire district for, you know, really everything that you're doing in the entire district, and certainly the Bridgewater School System. Appreciate the difficulty in this, going through COVID and the struggles and challenges financially. I would ask, does anyone need to have access in order to do a presentation or anything like this? If strictly just a discussion, it's fine.
Mr. President, just, just a discussion at this time.
Okay.
Mr. President, however, after this evening, anyone would like a, a copy of my preliminary budget that I presented last week, I'd be happy to forward that to you, Mr. Rushton, and just distribution to the other members of the council.
Excellent, thank you.
So thank you, Madam Chair, members of the School Committee, and thank you, Mr. President, and members of the Bridgewater Town Council. Thank you for allowing us this opportunity this evening. As Madam Chair King stated last Wednesday night, I did present my preliminary student success plan budget. As you know, from previous years, our budget presentation and our budget organization of needs are based upon our student success plan, which is our strategic plan that we created and developed three years ago. And basically, four pillars of the student success plan are safe and supportive schools, curriculum, instruction, technology, and facilities. And basically, through this needs-based budget, we are using those pillars and the objectives within them to drive our decision-making in regards to this operational budget, and also in regards to some of the capital items that we are advocating for as well. Just quickly, for those folks who may be new to the town council, the way a regional budget is generated, there's, I had three bites of the apple, as we say. Mr. Dutton just stated about state aid, which did come out last week, and we were pleasantly surprised with the number. We're hoping that that remains in terms of our Chapter 70 money. We also received Chapter 71 money, which is transportation. When regionalization first happened, the biggest incentive to regionalize was that the state stated that they would reimburse us 100% of our general transportation, not special education, or foster care, or McKinney-Vento. We never ever, with, with the caveat, if funding is available. It's never been at that 100% mark. We usually teeter anywhere between 60 to 80% of reimbursement from the state. We also receive Medicaid reimbursement from the state as well. The second bite of the apple is when we come and we advocate to members of FinCom and the town council, and, you know, the selectmen on the Rainham side, and that is through our town assessments, which, you know, equate to about 64% of our overall budget. And then the third piece is our district revenues, which account for about 3%, and those are our fee structures, parking, athletics, rental fees, whatnot. We also have our excess and deficiency appropriation, which regional school districts are allowed to have. It's almost like a, you know, a savings account that we can't put monies into, that we get certified from the previous fiscal year. And what we always try to do is utilize some of that funding to offset some of the assessments that come to the towns, and kind of lower those numbers the following year. So basically, through this budget, we are advocating, and, and, you know, some of the biggest, you know, budget cost and cost drivers, you know, is staffing. We, we believe that our greatest asset, you know, are our people. And as you know, there's quite a bit of development that's going on in both towns, you know, in terms, and those houses are now starting to come online. And with that, our population, our student population is, is on the rise, especially at the early elementary. This year, we did receive quite a bit of communication and feedback from the community of concern about the numbers in our kindergarten classes, some averaging about, you know, 27 per, which is, which is, you know, not the norm. And I don't feel as though this is an anomaly. I think this is kind of where we're gonna be trending, based upon the, the amount of development that's coming in and folks moving into our community, which is great. And, but with that, we have to then, you know, take into consideration, you know, the supports that our students need with that increased student population. Just to kind of give you a brief rundown in terms of our Staffing Success Plan, what we're looking for. On the Bridgewater side, we are looking for three teachers at Bridgewater Middle School. We're looking for a seventh-grade ELA teacher, a seventh-grade social studies teacher, and a seventh-grade science, technology, and engineering teacher. Back in 2009, 10, when we had some significant cuts due to some really lean years of, you know, budgetary issues, we did have to consolidate some of the staffing at the Bridgewater Middle School. And we went from a three-team model to a two-team model at that time. Since that time, we've really never corrected and remedied that. So we are advocating to start to build that staffing back up at the middle school level. On the Rainham side, at the Rainham Middle School, we're looking for one school adjustment counselor. As you know, with COVID and even pre-COVID, we did have quite a bit of concern in regards to the social, emotional well-being of our students. These school adjustment counselors do help and assist with students that may become dysregulated throughout the course of the day, or may just need a periodic check-in, you know, throughout the course of the week. We're also advocating for one eighth-grade civics teacher at Rainham Middle. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is now requiring our eighth-grade students to have a civics project at the end of their eighth-grade year. So we want to make sure that we have certified staff in that area of social studies. Currently, right now, we have a team that has in ELA, science, technology. Currently, right now, we have a team that has in ELA, science, technology, and mathematics, and they all share on an area of of the social studies curriculum. So we're really looking to, again, have certified people within that, within that discipline. At the high school, we're looking for one business teacher. A few years during the ASK, we were cited for not having enough availability of first AP courses, which I think we've done a great job of increasing our advanced placement courses, but also electives. And each year, we have many students that are trying to get into some of our business electives, and they become full very quickly. So we're looking to add another business teacher to that department in order to offer our students more electives in that area. And then when we talk about district-wide positions, we talk about positions that, again, support the entire district. So with that being said, we are advocating for two nurses. Desi did come, filed a report with us stating that for a district this large, that our nursing staff was understaffed. So we're trying to build those numbers up. And again, with COVID, over the course of the last two years, as Madam Chair stated earlier, has been really taxing on that department. And it was really evident that we needed to, you know, provide more support to that department under the guidance of our nurse leader, Claire Brennan, who's done an outstanding job over the course of the last two years, trying to navigate COVID and all the other responsibilities that our nurses need to take on. We are looking to create a sub-separate special education program that would be housed at the Bridgewater Middle School. Now, Bridgewater Middle School, once the school, the new school, the new George Mitchell Elementary School opens up on five hundred South Street, over the summer, we're going to be doing a multi-tier move, and the grades six through eight will return to one sixty-sixth Mount Prospect, the old high school, which is now currently the Mitchell Elementary School. There'll be a sub-separate program there. We'll need one teacher and two ESPs or educational support staff for that program. This is actually a cost avoidance measure, because what we're trying to do is, first and foremost, we want to be able to educate our own students within the communities in which they live. But also, by if if we don't have this program in district, what happens is they have to go to very costly out-of-district placements with high tuitions and transportation costs. So we have looked at about, we have about five students who kind of fall into that category. So basically, by creating this program, we are offsetting costs to out-of-district placements and actually saving money in the long run. We're looking for one technician for our technology department. Currently, our technology department for a district this size is only a department of four. So we are looking to, you know, add that additional tech, network technician that's currently being funded through a grant. We want to get that into the operational budget, because once that grant does kind of dry up and go away in two thousand twenty-four, if we don't incrementally put some of these positions into the operational budgets, those positions will go away, and we do need that tech support, especially now with all the additional devices that we've been able to purchase. And we are very appreciative of the town of Bridgewater in supporting us in that initiative, you know, working with Mr. Dutton and Mr. Samanti with some of the CARES Act monies. We've been able to purchase some Chromebooks to replace the ones that we had given out to families during hybrid learning. And now that we have all of these devices in place, we've also done some pretty significant infrastructure projects as well to support that technology. So we really need some technicians to to kind of build that department a bit and make it a little bit more robust. We are looking for one additional English as a second language teacher. When I first came to central office back in two thousand twelve, I, as the assistant superintendent, did oversee the ESL department, and at that time, we had about thirty students district-wide that were coded as English as a second language students. We're well over a hundred now, which is great, but now we need to make sure that we have the supports to support the needs of those students and their families. We're looking also for an assistant treasurer. We hired a treasurer two years ago, Mrs. Robichaud. She's done a great job, and at that time, she was the assistant treasurer. We never filled that position, so we're looking to fill that position. And we need one custodian, and that would go to the staff at the New Mitchell Elementary School. We're looking to have about two during the day and anywhere from four to five custodians at night. So basically, we're looking for fifteen positions total. That was prior to us starting to receive some information from from the towns about the increase of class sizes in kindergarten classes on both sides of the district. And we looked and started to have conversations with our building principals. And we've had quite a bit of move-ins throughout the course of the year that, you know, kind of contributed to the increases in class sizes. So we looked about, you know, what it would mean to hire a kindergarten teacher and what that ratio would be. Hiring one teacher is pretty much only going to lower that number to twenty-five instead of twenty-seven. So we're looking to say, maybe we need to put some more ESP, which is our educational support professionals or paraprofessionals, in each of those kindergarten classes. They are, they come in at a lower cost to us on the salary scales. And it is a situation, then, you're looking at, you know, you'd have a ratio of thirteen to one of educators to students within the classrooms. So we are looking also for an additional fourteen ESPs within this budget. I know this is a pretty significant ask of, you know, both towns. But again, when I'm developing these budgets with my team, and we have principals that are advocating for the buildings, directors that are advocating for their departments, again, it's all about providing the supports that our students need in order to be successful during their K-12 experience. So we are also asking for some capital projects to be done throughout the district, some replacement of boilers and hot water heaters throughout, you know, the town of Bridgewater and throughout the town of Rainham. But at the biggest capital expense that we are advocating for and requesting this year is a replacement of the track at the Bridgewater Rainham Regional High School. That track has been offline since about two thousand sixteen. It just was deemed unsafe to to use. I know that members of the, you know, community, we see people walking the track. And but in terms of, you know, a competitive, you know, high school program or even, you know, utilizing that for community activities, it is, it has been deemed unsafe. So we were fortunate enough with your support and the support of the town of Rainham last year to be able to replace our multipurpose field. Anyone who has not, you know, been able to get over to the high school and take a look, I'd be happy to give you a tour at some point. It's a beautiful turf field that we put in, and they did a beautiful job with it. It's got, you know, a ten-year warranty on it. We got a really good service plan for the upkeep of it as well, to hopefully extend end of life on that project. And what we've actually started to do internally is create a stabilization account, where we're putting certain monies away from each operational budget that can eventually go off to offset some major capital items that do come up in a, in a ten-year span, when, you know, the life expectancy of that field may end. Same thing with with our track. So what we are looking to do is, and we did reach out to a company, Cape Island Track and Tennis, and they did give us, you know, some tentative quotes. I know that Councilman Moore had requested some additional information about that. Right now, we initially estimated the cost about, to be about eight hundred fifty thousand, which, again, because it's a district-wide cost to both the towns of Rain, Bridgewater, and Rainham, it would be that sixty-forty split based upon the the formula mechanism within the regional agreement. So originally, we thought it would be about eight hundred fifty thousand. Today, our director of facilities, Mr. Thomas Kilgore, he has been like a dog on a bone trying to get, you know, some real kind of harder numbers from the sales rep from Cape Island Track and Tennis. And today, he was able to get the number, and the the price is actually about a hundred thousand dollars less than, you know, he was originally quoted, so about seven hundred fifty thousand. I will state, though, that does, that does not include the fencing that goes around the the track itself. We would have to go to another vendor for that project. And Mr. Kilgore is kind of guesstimating that project being about about fifty thousand. So we might be back up to that eight hundred thousand mark. We are looking for it to be a eight-lane track. We do have the footprint for an eight-lane track. That's what it was originally when it was designed. I know many communities have six-lane tracks. And in speaking to the the sales rep, he stated that when he had had those conversations with some of the neighboring communities that had the sixth lane, they had inquired about an eight-lane. It would cost them additional monies in order to do that, because, again, they would have to extend that footprint, where we actually have that footprint in place already. If we were actually to reduce it to a six-lane, it would probably cost us about the same amount of money, because we would have to bring in Phil and and try to, you know, take the space of that part of the track that would have to be removed. So we are looking, again, for an eight-lane track. Again, too, what I mentioned in the preliminary budget is that we also foresee this almost possibly being a revenue stream for us as well, because there are not many eight-lane tracks within our region. We could utilize that for rentals as well. And again, that could, you know, eventually be a revenue stream, which I, you know, stated earlier, is part of how we develop our operational budgets, that third bite of the apple with our fee structures. One thing they did state today, too, was they will be rebuilding the high jump, the runway pit, the pole vault runway, all as part of the project. So those are not additional costs that would cost us any more other than outside of that figure of seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. So again, that's that's the largest capital item that we're asking for. We realized last year, we asked for the multi, you know, purpose field to be replaced, which is another big, large-ticket item. But I would say, you know, we have to understand that our our grounds are a huge part of our students' K-12 experience. So and they are part of our facilities, and they are part of our, you know, ten-year capital improvement plan that we have, capital items that we have shared with the towns in the past, and be happy to share that again if anyone needs a copy of it. But last year's FY twenty-two proposed budget that was approved without capital in debt was seventy-seven million, four hundred eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars. This budget, again, without capital in debt, is eighty-five million, six hundred thirty-three thousand, and forty-four dollars. When we talk about some of the capital projects that I just explained, it is an additional, you know, two million, four hundred thirty-four thousand dollars. So last year's grand total of operations with capital in debt was eighty-three million, nine hundred twenty-three thousand, three hundred and eight. And this year's with capital in debt, again, my preliminary proposed budget would be ninety-two million, nine hundred nineteen thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars. So we understand that that's about a ten percent increase from FY twenty-two. The real work begins now, now that the school committee was gracious enough to approve the budget and accept it as their own. Now we start to work closely with the towns, with FinCom, through our budget subcommittee, and we try to, you know, obviously, you know, get a pulse of where you are as a community and what you can handle in terms of an assessment, as we would do again with with the town of Rainham. And at that point, we kind of go back to my preliminary budget and try to make the adjustments accordingly. So with that being said, I'd be happy, again, I would be happy to share this out with anybody who would like a copy. I'd be happy to take any questions this evening and be happy to take any questions, you know, after this evening, if anybody has any concerns or questions or things come up as the budget season progresses.
Thank you, Mr. Swenson. And, Mr. Rushton, I can email you a copy of the capital plan and Mr. Swenson's proposed budget, so you could distribute that to the town council and FinCom as well, you know, after this meeting. And like I said, it has been sent to budget subcommittee with Dr. Pruwandowski, myself, Mrs. Holbrook, and Mr. Dolan. I believe we have two meetings before the public hearing on March ninth. So we, we know that Mr. Swenson presented this budget of, you know, all of his needs encompassed what he would like to see for the next year. However, the budget sub recognizes that ten percent is a high number. So we obviously will look at that and, you know, make fiscally responsible decisions and see what, you know, what we foresee being acceptable to the towns.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Swenson.
With your permission, I would say, too, Mr. Rushton, too, we'll also send you our five-year technology capital item plan, because there are some capital items that are included in this budget that are involved around technology and some infrastructure projects as well. So we'd be happy to send you both the ten-year capital improvement plan for facilities and five-year for technology. And the only reason, obviously, we we planned out five years for technologies, because technology, obviously, moves and changes so quickly. And I just want to, you know, take this opportunity to thank the school committee for for all of their support throughout the budget process. Thank you as the, you know, leaders in the town of Bridgewater for all that you do and what you have done over the course of the last few years to make sure that, you know, our students get what they need and they deserve as the town of Rainham, thank them as well. Also, thank you to my my principals, my directors, my managers, my business manager, Director of Business Services, Kathy Macedo, who, you know, is second to none. She is, she's outstanding and helps me through, you know, navigate this budget season each and every year, keeping a watchful eye out for the governor's budget and monies that we're going to be getting in, you know, tentatively from the state and other areas. So I can't thank my team enough for all that they did throughout the budget process. But again, the school committee and and you folks as the town council for your continued support each and every year during our budget cycle.
Mr. Rushton, do we have any questions from your council?
Well, I was just going to ask first if if you wanted the chair of your sub, sub, budget subcommittee to say anything or if they're all set. I was going to give one opportunity first before I opened up the questions to the other chair, Nathan Schofield.
Thank you, Dr. Pruwandowski. Would you like to say anything?
Hi, Rachel, and everyone, I really don't have anything to add. Just look forward to working with the towns of Bridgewater and Rainham to create a budget we can all support, starting at our February fourteenth budget subcommittee meeting.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pruwandowski.
Chair Schofield, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just real quick, I was furiously trying to write down, as Mr. Swenson was talking here. If I heard correctly, so it's a total of twenty-nine new hires that you're looking for in your proposed twenty twenty-three budget, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Schofield. Initially, we had prioritized, we had, we had thirty requests come in west from our principals, directors, and managers. We were able to get that down to the fifteen positions that I initially spoke to. As the budget season progressed, we started to receive concerns from our community members, stakeholders, parents of kindergarten students, of incoming case students for the next school year, as well as our principals and kindergarten teachers. So we then sat down and, again, we tried to 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 map out what the the additional adding of of teachers would mean. And again, adding one or two teachers only brings that number down to twenty-three, twenty-five, which is still a a pretty significant number with student ratios. So that's when we started to kind of, you know, through our team, Mr. Powers, our So that's when we started to kind of, you know, through our team, Mr. Powers, our Assistant Superintendent and Christine Richards, our uh uh Director of Student Learning for Humanities and Kara Joyce, our uh Teaching and Learning of STEM and STEAM and Caleb Arios, our DEI Coordinator. And we started to talk about what about if we, you know, advocated for ESP support, meaning having a um full-time ESP in the non-inclusion section uh classrooms, because the special education classrooms already have additional supports in it either through an ESP or or a uh special education teacher. Um, and then that ratio, again, would kind of lower that from, you know, twenty-seven to one to thirteen, you know, to one, so you know, educator to to student ratio. And again, the ESPs come in at a lower cost on on our on our pay scales. So yes, after those fifteen were advocated for, you know, throughout my team, you know, we stated that maybe we needed to um, you know, add those additional fourteen. So yes, twenty-nine, and I know that's a little sticker shock and I get it. Um, I don't think any budget I've asked for, you know, more than um, you know, eighteen, nineteen positions. But again, um just because of, you know, the amount of growth, student population growth we're having, you know, at the uh early elementary. And again, it's 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 a good problem to have. We're we're building homes. People are coming into our districts, they want to, you know, live in, you know, great towns like Bridgewater and Rainham. My wife and I did the same thing, you know, back in two thousand four, we were starting a family. Um, but it is a situation now where, you know, because of those houses coming online, we are seeing definitely a uh influx of uh early elementary school students. And we want to make sure that we put the supports in place uh for those students.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, personally, I don't know how even two people would handle twenty-seven kindergarteners. But um how many, how many employees are there currently in the bridge uh Bridgewater Regional System? Do you know?
So we have about three hundred eighty-five teachers. We have about another uh eighty or so ESPs. Um, and then uh then, you know, we have our our support staff, which are like custodians, our um our uh secretaries and whatnot. And that's probably, you're probably looking at a, you know, even an additional forty there. So, you know, we have a little, you know, a little bit over um, you know, just about almost five hundred, I would say. Then um yeah, substitutes in into that and that makes, but we're related and count those as, you know, FTE, um, you know, full-time employees. But, you know, you're looking at, you know, about five hundred employees district-wide.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Chair Schofield, if I may. Um, so like I said, I I don't see twenty-nine getting through the budget sub with Dr. Prewindowski. Um, but it's definitely going to be a healthy discussion. The the original fifteen that Mr. Swenson put through are all definitely needed. Those were the ones that initially made the cut, that he saw a big need for, um especially the middle school ones. We definitely need um middle school and then the business teacher at the high school. However, I know Mrs. Holbrook has really been passionate as a retired um elementary school teacher. The support that the kindergarten teachers need right now at that level is definitely, you know, very needed as well. So it's going to definitely be a healthy discussion of, you know, where the money is going to be and what are the highest priorities for us, so.
Thank you.
Nathan, Chairman Schofield, this is Julie. Um, I appreciate the smaller classroom kindergarten sizes as well, but I have two questions. One is, you mentioned a civics civics teacher for the eighth grade on the Rainham side. How does the Bridgewater side address the civics requirement?
Can I just interrupt for a second?
Yeah.
Can I interrupt for a second? Who are you?
Julie Scoparish from the FinCom.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So I, my question was on the on the civics, um the question, an eighth grade teacher on the Rainham side, how does the Bridgewater side address the civics piece?
A great question. We already have certified teachers in those areas, Ms. Scoparish.
Thank you. And the um of those original fifteen positions, would some not fill in those positions affect the accreditation? You mentioned something about um that as well.
Yeah, a great question. I I right now, uh we're actually, believe it or not, going into the ask in another year or so. Uh, it it was something that we were cited on. Um, I don't think it's something that would impact accreditation in terms of um, you know, electives um within a with within a certain department. Um, although they did, you know, state that we should be for a high school that size uh, you know, providing more electives uh, you know, for our students. And obviously, we would much rather have students uh in in an actual course rather than, you know, in a in a in a study hall type situation. I mean, you know, some students need that study hall if they have extracurricular activities or jobs or things along those lines, and they can utilize that time uh during the academic day. But really, truly, we want to be able to provide as many educational opportunities to our students. And I will say, uh, Mr. Ferreira, David Ferreira, who's the head of uh the Business Department, he's done a great job of uh, you know, marketing that department and and trying to bring in um new and exciting uh courses that are kind of real-world uh application that students may view as, you know, a future vocational tracks uh and go on later to, you know, a, you know, a two- or a four-year uh business school after high school. He also started a DECA program through the Business Department. So he has a lot of exciting ideas, you know, as to, you know, where he wants to go if we have the the additional uh teacher. Um, he's talked about, you know, sports management type, our sports marketing type um, you know, program and, you know, some other, you know, exciting ideas for for our students that are kind of real-world. So um, you know, we are, Mrs. Watson has advocated for this position. I think over the course of maybe the last three, two to three um budget uh seasons. So we are trying to kind of get that in. But I don't foresee that if we didn't get that in, Scoparish, if I'm hearing you correctly, that it would, you know, impact accreditation at the high school.
Okay, and as far as the ESP go.
Hold on, hold on a second, Julie. I I want to give the, I want to give the town council an opportunity. You'll have an opportunity as we come back into the budget, okay?
That's fine.
So it, we're dealing with um, or I'm dealing with an iPad here. So I'm just going to call on the council, um Madam Chair King, if you don't mind. I'll I'll just kind of go through a pecking order, whether or not they have some questions. I just ask the council, be mindful of the time. We're early in the budget process. If uh you can keep it really high level, so we're not um, you know, putting the superintendent or the school committee in a position where they can't answer the question. But I'd start with Councilor George. Do you have anything? I hear noises. Okay, I'll move on to Councilor Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick question to the superintendent. Um, whether the final number is fifteen or twenty positions, um, how how confident are you in the employment pool out there that you'll be able to fill them? Because that's been really an issue um in a lot of areas, in particularly school, particularly in the in the, you call them ESP, I call them paraprofessional um grades. So how do you tend to handle that?
Yeah, that's a great, you are, you are correct. Um, the, I I I don't, I don't foresee it being an issue for, you know, the teaching positions. Um, we we use a program called uh School Spring. And basically, it's a, it's a digital program and we were able to recruit, you know, you know, outside of our region, where like in the past, you'd put a ad in the Boston Globe and you'd kind of get, you know, area, people within this area to to um, you know, apply for those positions. School Spring reaches out uh nationwide, globally, actually. Um, so that, so that, in in the type of positions that we are advocating for in this uh budget in terms of the teaching one, I I would not foresee there being a shortage in those areas. I feel as though we'd have a pretty healthy candidate pool. But you are correct, the ESP positions are the ones that um we may have experienced some difficulties um filling. Uh, that's why we want to be able to kind of get a handle on, um, you know, the bucket, you know, with the town so that, you know, we could, if we kind of have an idea going into, you know, May, that um, you know, both towns can handle the assessments that we are advocating for and we will kind of, you know, have a better handle on chapter seventy and seventy-one and our revenues. Uh, we'd like to post as um proactively as possible, as anticipated uh positions um and and hopefully be able to um, you know, recruit um some some individuals, too. Um, you know, it's also a situation where, you know, way back when, when when I first started teaching, it was that when, you know, people who were getting into education um did, maybe did not find a full-time position, they took a job in as a paraprofessional in order to kind of get their their foot in the door. So I think, um, you know, maybe working with, you know, President Clark and some folks over at BSU through the Industrial Department and, you know, trying to reach out to those individuals, um, you know, and and trying to find some, you know, candidates that have maybe just, um, you know, graduated from uh the Educational Department at BSU. It's it's an incredible asset that we have, a teaching, one of the best teaching colleges in the backyard. Um, so, you know, we're going to have to get very creative and um myself, Mr. Powers, our Assistant Superintendent, our HR Manager, Mrs. Caderro, have had those conversations because through COVID, it's been very difficult to find positions like proctors, um, people to fill proctors and and ESP positions. So we're going to have to get creative, probably going to have to uh get out there and I'm going to reach out to to BSU and um really promote those positions in order to get them filled.
Thank you. Okay, Councilor Perry.
Uh, thank you. Uh, this is Superintendent, I just as an extension on that. I think it would be a great idea to uh to work with BSU more closely and use that resources that we have. Uh, in your proposal, you mentioned teachers to for expansion of of student numbers. Um, was that including any, or do you anticipate any retirements in the coming year?
Yes, well, um, as of right now, I want to say that I have received possibly maybe six to ten retirees. And that's not only teachers, but paraprofessionals uh in other areas of of the organization. Um, I will say, Dr. Perry, that I feel the next two years, three years, we're going to see a real turnover um in terms of our um staffing, only because uh many of our uh teaching staff um are at that um time in their career where they are close to retirement. And it seems like there's a, there's a healthy bubble there of folks that are going to be, you know, exiting, um, you know, for um purposes of of retirement in the next two to three years. So that's something we're keeping a watchful eye on as well. Um, and that's why, again, we have a a terrific relationship with President Clark and, you know, the folks at BSU and the Education Department there. And, you know, we really, you know, a a good portion of the students that we, the the uh teachers we actually hire um are actually students from BSU that do their student teaching here within the district. Um, because we're able to kind of put eyes on them, you know, for a three-month period and um, you know, be able to then, you know, recruit them in the, you know, positions that we have within the district. So um, again, that's that's definitely, you know, something that's advantageous to us to to tap into. And we will continue to do so, so.
Great. And just a second question, uh based on the uh potential track project. Do we have a potential uh timeframe when that work would take place and how long will it take?
Great question, yes. So um our Director of Facilities, uh Tom Kilgore did just finally, he's been trying to talk to this rep for a good, you know, two or three weeks now, try to get in touch with him. Um, he finally got in touch with him today and he basically stated that if we could commit um by early spring um to the project, that this is a project that could be uh worked on over the summer. And hopefully, um, you know, complete um by the start of the school year. Um, you know, I I say that um optimistically, but cautiously optimistic because of, you know, the multipurpose field that, you know, we were on time uh with everything in terms of us getting it through the budget process, working with field turf. It just happened to be, you know, due to COVID, as everyone knows, it was the supplies issue. It's, you know, we are, our carpet was in a warehouse down in Georgia. We had some of the backing and materials that were needed that were in a warehouse down in Louisiana. And it was just the getting the trucking and the deliveries uh here uh on time. And, you know, I I I would hope that we don't run into that uh again. But that could be, you know, an issue depending upon uh where we are in terms of that, you know, nationwide with our, um, you know, trucking and and uh supply chains. So but if we do um, you know, commit to this project uh by early spring, um, he is stating that the work would begin um, you know, throughout the summer uh months and or probably, you know, at the at the start of our new fiscal year after July one.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all I got. Okay, thank you. Councilor Chase.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Superintendent Swenson, if I may, just a a follow-up question with respect to the uh to the track. Um, I'm wondering, i- is that actually the the largest single capital expenditure uh in your proposed budget at this point?
Yes, that for this budget, yes, sir. It is.
And is it uh, is it also, uh, well, let me ask it this this way. Uh, what other student use expenditures, capital expenditures are anticipated?
Well, really, truly, in terms of say, use, I would say, basically, they're more mechanical-type systems for our schools, replacement of boilers, heating.
Plants, yeah.
Physical, yeah, physical plant items. Um, so I mean, I I I would hate to prioritize a track over heat. I mean, I, we we need, we need to make sure that our that our schools obviously have, you know, up-to-date, you know, mechanical systems uh within them. And, you know, if we look on the the capital uh improvement plan, you know, we have really kind of scoped it out each year, where we feel as though, you know, we are nearing end of life in terms of uh those mechanicals. And at that time, you know, we really try to um, you know, plan that uh replacement of a hot water tank, a boiler, furnace, whatever it may be, for that year, based upon, you know, what we we lean on in terms of our uh Director of Facilities in our um interior maintenance crew. Um, one thing that we we did implement a few years ago is a program called School Dude. And what it does is actually, it allows us to have a schedule of all of our PM, all of our preventative maintenance um type uh planning. And uh by kind of, you know, really truly sticking to that plan, we have been able to extend um end-of-life for a lot of our mechanicals. But it gets to a point where, you know, there's only so much triage you can do on some of our mechanicals. And we don't want to have catastrophic failures throughout the course of, you know, any school year. So um, yeah, so basically, there are, you know, um, you know, basically mechanical uh and infrastructure type um asks within the um other capital expenses.
Well, thank you and and thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Souza.
Nothing, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Moore.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to Superintendent Swenson for the budget walkthrough and the track details. Appreciate that. Um, so actually, before my question, I I also want to thank the school committee, the superintendent and the Bridgewater School staff for the work navigating COVID. Um, I have two young kids in the district and was incredibly impressed by the extra effort put in by their principals and their teachers uh to just sort of keep them going. So so thank you to the to the staff and the supporting uh structure there. Um, so maybe moving on to my question. So for me, um, you know, educational excellence is a critical part of our town's, like, long-term strategic plan. Uh, without a strong education system, a lot of the other things we want to do in town are are much harder to do. So I just, I just have a few questions, maybe specifically for for that, for understanding that outcome. So I think um in the last time that uh the superintendent presented his budget to the school committee, uh he tied it to a a strategic plan, the student success plan. Um, and I think I'm hearing to hear, I'm I'm hoping to hear maybe a little bit more about the effectiveness of that plan uh before we vote on any budget asks that are tied to it. And maybe just to sort of go a little deeper into that, like, I think when I check state data about our our district, it looks maybe like our our MCAS scores have stalled over the past few years. Um, it looks like we're trailing some of our peer districts in LA. Our student growth percentage is is lower than our peer districts, even when you sort of like factor COVID in. Um, and then I think maybe the the most concerning thing to me is it looks like many of our schools in Bridgewater are are meeting less than fifty percent of of state accountability targets. I think liberty and I think Little Liberty and, and Rainham is the exception. They're achieving 87% of state accountability targets. Even with the same budget constraints. So it shows that it's not necessarily a financial thing. I'm not, not sure what it is. Congratulations to that school. So I think I'm, I'm just really trying to understand how these budget decisions that we're making today. Like directly shape the better outcomes tomorrow. And I think I have two, maybe specific asks here or questions. I think the first one is if, if we fund the prioritized asks from your plan that you talked about. You know, sort of which of these state-recognized metrics or maybe your own internal metrics should we expect to improve? You know, by, by picking the business teacher, does one of these sort of metrics go up? And then I think tied to it, you know, what, what evidence do we have to know that the student success plan that we're all following and funding is actually working? Right? Is, is it actually getting the outcome for students that you're expecting? And so I think those are just my two questions. I'd love to just hear thoughts, maybe your thoughts, Superintendent or the school committees.
Sure. So, well, three questions, well, three questions. When we talk about our student success plan, you know, basically what we've done over the course. Of the last few budget cycles and, you know, COVID has kind of put us at a standstill with certain things. And, and I don't want to use the COVID card to, you know, in any way, shape or form excuse anything. In, in terms of, you know, our student achievement. Basically, when we were developing. You know, the student success plan, we were looking at ways in which, to, to, to your point. Improve those areas of concern that, that we had. One thing we did was we did an assessment of, of our dark districts. You just mentioned comparable districts. Our dark districts are comparable districts. We have 10 comparable districts throughout the Commonwealth. That not are really, you know, within our region. So it's not that we are comparable to East Bridgewater or West Bridgewater. These are our dark districts that, you know, are comparable by demographic, by student population. The way in which our, our schools are aligned or a lot of many different factors. One thing that we did notice was that we did not have that underlayer of. Curriculum support at the central office level. You know, it was myself and the assistant superintendent and as the former assistant superintendent. I will tell you, you know, you were, you know, I, I wore the hats of K-12 curriculum, ESL director. I was the harassment officer. I mean, all these things and, you know, throughout the course of a week. If you've got 11 minutes of curriculum in because you're always putting out, you know, fires and then trying to support your principals and the students and the families. A lot of those things that we felt as though needed to be addressed weren't being addressed. So this student success plan, we've been able to incorporate, you know, items such as or positions such as. Our, you know, Mrs. Richards, who is our, you know, coordinator of teaching and learning for humanities, ELA. And the, the other, the history and social studies and whatnot. And this year. With the support of the towns and, and the school committee, we were able to get a coordinator teacher learning for STEM. So basically now what we're trying to do is by building these positions into our budgets. Is allowing those people now to do that work, to really analyze the data that we have and not only MCAS data. And I'm not stating that MCAS data isn't important, but that is a snapshot of, you know, 180 days of a school year. We have, we have internal, you know, assessments that, that we really look at. Benchmark assessments within our different curriculum resources that we look at. We, we have a program that, you know, this year that we implemented in iReady. And we're able then to identify students that are below grade level, at grade level or above grade level in terms of literacy. So really truly these individuals now are able to take on that work. That really truly had, what had happened was that previous, you know, to, to, to me being in the district. I got here in 2008, but prior to that, there were a lot of fiscal cycles that were, were some very, very lean years. And resulted in some pretty significant, you know, reductions in staff. A lot of that being at the central office level in terms of the areas of curriculum. So now what we're trying to do is put a focus on through this student success plan, on hiring those individuals. Who will analyze, you know, the internal data through iReady, through our benchmark assessments, yes, you know. Utilizing, you know, our MCAS scores, which we have always done in the past. So I guess when you ask about, you know, the student success plan and how that translates to. You kind of, you know, identifying, you know, metrics and how we're measuring it. I think it's going to take time too. I would say, you know, I would say to folks that change is, is a process, not an event. It's not something that's going to happen immediately. These individuals coming in are working very closely with our teachers. They're bringing in the professional development that we've identified that our students need. They're assessing all of our current curriculum resources. And stating that, you know, maybe they are somewhat antiquated and that we need to move in a different direction in terms of some of our resources. So really truly, you know, unfortunately, this district has kind of gone without that for many years. So now I believe that these individuals that we have hired and that were objectives within our student success plan. Are gonna really truly eventually lead to, you know, not seeing that plateauing of our MCAS scores. Or identifying, you brought up a great point, why is it 87% on one side of the district? Why is it that way on the Bridgewater? We say we are BR all the time. We want to make sure it's happening in the B's, happening in the R and vice versa. So that's gonna be, you know, having those individuals analyze the data, have group and team meetings with. Grade levels, teachers at, from both sides of the district collectively through our lead teachers and the rest. So I feel as though, you know, the, the process of the student success plan is first putting the people in place. That are going to eventually have that impact and significant, significant impact. On, you know, student achievement and those metrics that you are, you know, speaking to, Mr. Moore. Hope that makes sense.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent. Maybe just a quick follow-up thing. I think as, as some of those changes are happening. You know, we're trying to sort of understand the impact on Bridgewater in particular, right? That's, that's who we represent. And so if, if it may be in an upcoming school committee meeting or some other forum, if you could set some expectations from the time horizon. That you're expecting us to see that impact, right? With this investment or with this English teacher with smaller class sizes. You know, is this next year, is it three years, is it 10 years? Because we need that information to help us plan on our side. So I appreciate the answer though. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counsel.
Can I just make one comment?
Sure, absolutely.
I just want to build on that. As Mr. Swenson said, we do have the three curriculum coordinators now. Ms. Richards, we've had for a couple of years and she was our go-to curriculum coordinator for several years. And last year, we kind of moved her towards just humanities and last year we took on Ms. Barrios and Ms. Joyce for DEI. As well as STEM. And I feel like with, because of COVID, taking all of our time and energy, really. They had, the three of them haven't had the chance to fully show us everything. We've, we had a start, but we haven't had a chance to fully see where they're gonna go with everything that they have, you know, everything that they have planned. I know a big part of what I want to see them do is like you said. Equity and aligning the districts. You know, we do have certain schools like Little Liberty, which my daughters, you know, I have one in there now. We want to see that in all of our schools. So we definitely want to see, you know, equity across the district. And that's by, you know, them doing professional development across the district. Them looking at all of the curriculum and making plans and being in all of the schools and make sure everything is the same across both towns. And, you know, getting all the schools to that little liberty levels, you know, we all want to see that. So we are, we're all on board with that, Mr. Moore.
Hey, thanks. Yeah, Little Liberty is a, a great case. I think it's shown us that you can get the outcome without necessarily having the incremental investment. So it's, whatever the secret is there, you know, I like the idea that we're learning from it. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, Counsel Wood.
All right, thank you. It, as many know, I've been involved in the budget process now for almost 10 years or thereabouts. So some of these questions might be the same night asked before, but there's a couple of new ones. Now try to be, be brief. So, Mr. Swenson, you mentioned the new building. Obviously that's coming online this summer. I think all of the buildings that are impacted are, are Bridgewater buildings, not necessarily Rainham buildings. And, and you mentioned, obviously, you know, the need to add a couple of custodians, new building, new, new staff. And I would imagine most of the teachers and students are moving over from other locations. And I'm wondering if you've done a, you know, not necessarily a, a move plan, but a budget plan. That shows the impact to the Bridgewater side of the district. And by that, I mean. I, I see items on our capital request for boilers. I see other items. I know furniture fixtures were included in the, in the budget. And I think you still have some insurance money, but there seems to be, you know, some other moves involved, moving the eighth grade out of the high school. Moving six and seven around. I'm not sure what happens three through fifth. So I don't think you can answer it tonight. But if we could see some breakdown of, of those expected costs and where they might impact that haven't already been anticipated. Either operationally or on the capital plan, I think that'd be useful for the FinCom and, and the council as well. I, I don't know if you can answer. I don't think there's anything you can really answer there, but if you have a, have a breakdown, I'd, I'd appreciate seeing it.
Yeah, so Mr. Wood, so just so you are aware, so it is going to impact. A Rainham school, Rainham Middle is now housing the district-wide integrated special education pre-K program. So that will impact the Rainham Middle School. It'll also impact, as you stated, the high school. Of the eighth graders coming over to 166 Mile Prospect, Williams Intermediate School. With the seventh grade coming over along with the eighth, sixth grade to 166 Mile Prospect. And then the third grade is not going to be going down to 500 South Street. They will then be housed at the Williams Intermediate School. All of the moves have been incorporated within the project itself. We are working with a company, I believe Sterling, they've already delivered us packing boxes. And our, and our teachers, once they finish a unit, have already been begun to pack that up, label it. And then eventually we will have that multi-tier move beginning right at the end of, you know, the, the school year. In fact, we even dedicated our last professional development day of the year. We've given opportunities because pretty much all of our buildings are, are, are impacted, even on the Rainham side. To allow our teachers a time so that again, it would not be at a cost operationally. To pay them for their time during the summer to pack up, giving them that day during the academic year. To, to, on the last day of school, make sure that all of their materials and resources and things are packed up. Labeled correctly and ready for pickup for Sterling. I will say the move from the eighth graders to 166 Mile Prospect. Will be predominantly materials and resources. That was furniture. That was already at the high school, so we're not gonna have to worry about, you know, the moving of furniture and whatnot from the high school over to 166 Mile Prospect. We are purchasing some new furniture for our middle school students there too. So we won't have to, you know, move much in, in terms of that between sites. All of the furnishings and technology and the rest at 500 South Street again are a part of the, the. Project. So we don't have to worry about, you know, moving any of those things there as well. So we do have a plan in place. It's, it's well, you know, sorted out and structured. And, you know, we'll have that all in place prior to the end of the school year. So at some point, we'd be happy to, if, once we have the actual plan scripted out and whatnot. Happy to share that with you and other members of the town council.
That'd be great. Thank you. I'm going back into the main budget. So this year's budget is somewhere around 77 million. I think I heard you say 77, thereabouts. And you have about 500 staff under that. And I imagine most of those are collective bargaining. So the question is, given, given starting at a starting point of 77 million. And keeping everything else constant, which some people might refer to as level funding, which isn't really level funding, but same store. Kind of cost, keeping everything the same with the same increases. You know, assuming the same increases from Bridgewater, Rainham, and now you have a little more clarity on the, on the state money. What would that effort raise your, your budget to? It'd be less than 85 million, I imagine. I'm just looking to see what, what that number would be.
If, if, if you're, if you're stating, if we were just to kind of flip the page, turn the page from FY22 to FY23. And just factor in COLAs and, and, and the rest, we'd be looking at about a, you know, a hundred, I bet a million. A million, like 1.6, 1.5, 1.6, just turning the page with COLAs and, and the rest. That's kind of cool of them that we've looked at in, in previous years.
All right. And then you mentioned needs-based budget, but I don't think we ever tell our town manager to do a needs-based budget. The battleships. But in that case, and I understand the, the desire to have all these additional staff. But in, in, have you or the budget committee of, of the school committee taken a look at revenue projections? And then tried to create an, an expense budget based on the revenue projections? Again, maybe modeling to what, you know, Bridgewater, Rainham and the state may provide as, as your revenue sources.
Well, I, I think we, we, we kind of do it in reverse, right? We ask, then we kind of figure out what the towns and the state are going to be able to provide us. And then we go back to my operational budget and go through each line item and figure out, you know, what reductions we need to make. In order to, you know, make that number. What I, I feel I need to do each year, even if I. Don't believe it would make it through the budget process, I feel as though I need to advocate for those positions because they might be positions. That most likely, if they don't make it through, you know, FY23, most likely be advocating for, for FY24. So it's important, I think, for the committee and the communities at large and the town council and selectmen. In Rainham to understand why I am asking for, for these individuals. You know, a prime example of that would be, you know, our coordinator of teaching and learning, Mrs. Richards. I believe I advocated for that position maybe over three different operational budget cycles. And each year would, would try to, you know, advocate in a way to show. Why that was a need, you know, of, of the district. And to Mr. Moore's point early on, you know, in terms of like, what, what, where's our bang for our buck? What are, what are these individuals doing that are going to any position that I advocate? What is that, what is that individual going to do to improve student achievement of all of our students? Not only on, you know, not only at the Little Liberty Elementary School, but at the Mitchell Elementary School, Williams Intermediate School and the rest. So I think it's important that, even though I, I, I would always, I always kind of have an idea of what. Although I was pleasantly, again, surprised and I'm hoping it, you know, is, is not, you know, something that I misread. You know, I'm looking at chapter 70 monies last week and, and what, you know, projected is in comparison to FY22. And, you know, always kind of have an idea of try to stay in that, you know, two and a half percent type, you know, area for, for our towns. I always, you know, and as does the budget sub, we always kind of have an idea going in, you know, what is realistic in terms of. You know, asking for 29 positions. What does that mean? We, we know that I'm not gonna get the 29 positions. I, but I feel as though I need to at least advocate for them. So that, again, the committee, the communities, you folks, FinCom from both towns. Have an understanding of what we feel as though we need in the district in order to run effectively and efficiently each and every day. To impact student achievement, so.
I agree. I, I like that Mr. Swenson comes to the budget with all of those. Realistically, a handful, a handful might get through the final budget, but. But as a school committee member, I want him to tell me what he thinks we need to be fully successful. I want to know that we need a team at the Williams. We need a civics teacher at the eighth grade Rainham. You know, we need a business teacher. Those things might not all get through the budget. But as a school committee member, I I want to know and I want the community to know. These are things that are important to us and we might get not get through them now, but, you know, it is on our radar and we know that we need them.
Yeah, as a last point, I I would just like to highlight the fact that, you know, Tony, Tony Sumonti has some wonderful models. For our town revenue. And over the years, we've projected somewhere around three percent increase in revenues and it's and it's all mapped out. You know, we we sat through the workshop a couple of years ago and he explained exactly where the revenue sources come from. But our expectations of the revenue sources, we did that budget resolution at the, you know, back of the fall. To project out what what, you know, is our process on the town side for revenue projections. And and schools, you know, we we need to be fair. The schools in the revenue projections for most of the revenues gather about fifty percent of the revenues. And then, of course, we have the the debt exclusions, which brings up the the total cost of schools up to about sixty percent of the Bridgewater budget. So I I'm just advocating to Dr. Pre Windowski and the other members of the budget committee. To our finance director, take a look at those models, work through the together. Through the revenue projections and understand what the the true amount of, you know, the the revenue sources from all three. Are going to be and then work as many of those additional pieces in as possible, but but, you know, it has to be reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Wood. Councilor Colm Bodis.
I don't have any questions. Thanks.
Okay, moving on to myself, I just had one brief comment, really not a question, just what I thought was an opportunity. For the district, if it's possible in this conversation. Was to look at in terms of, I know you're working through contracts and some of those have been resolved, but and maybe this already takes place. But some sort of incentive that incentivizes employees to make early notification about retirements. And and when you talked earlier about six to ten maybe in the district. I kind of look at those as potential opportunities to actually increase overall staffing without increasing the budget. As those higher level, higher paid employees transition out of the district and we bring in lower entry level positions. And I'm just wondering, maybe as we move in the next several years, if you're going to have enough retirements that we could actually. Fully staff the the twenty-nine positions through just regular attrition, keeping the budget constant. So I guess with that, I would just say I'm certainly appreciative of the entire school committee coming this evening. I know that I just wanted to defer to the town manager, just for a couple of more comments from the town, so I'll defer to the town manager, Michael Dutton.
So, thank you, Mr. President. I have I have just a couple items and I think, as I mentioned earlier. You know, this is sort of a unique instance where the February, my February first budget submission, which is, I think the charter refers to it. As the preliminary budget, actually coincides with this joint meeting. I don't think that's happened before. Usually the joint meeting is sometime in January. And we really don't have the governor's budget. We don't have, you know, really any any good numbers to go off of. But I did want, excuse me, I wanted to, first of all, thank superintendent, I, you know, tell him frequently that the worst job. In the world over the last two years has been being a superintendent of schools, so 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 my sympathies. But but also thank the school committee for for active participation in in our in our budget process. So it's it's much appreciated. I think the finance committee appreciates it and I think I I know the council does and I certainly do. But I will just point out a couple of things. We do have some initial revenue estimates. And according to the council's budget resolution, I think we can give you a pretty good sense of, actually a very good sense of where we'll be. The end of the process in terms of revenue sharing. This year, and I I submitted this information just today with with my preliminary budget. So we have, we're projecting new growth to be at nine hundred forty thousand dollars, which is just shy of two percent. Of our FY twenty-two levy limit. And we'll have, we'll have more final numbers later, probably mid-April or so. We do have, obviously, the governor's budget proposal gives us two point seven percent increase. For us, that's about a hundred and eight thousand dollars over FY twenty-two. We also, and I, Tony can speak to this a little bit, certainly it's to his credit. We have really done a pretty good job of looking at our local receipts despite COVID. You know, we've sort of come back, analyzed our local receipts as as they have been. Sort of, I'll call it post-COVID and and taking the COVID year out of the picture. We've done sort of a five-year look back and we can project out over FY twenty-three. So right now, we are looking at a three point two percent revenue share number. Which which is is good news as far as I'm concerned. We also have, I think, as the council knows, we appropriated about four hundred and seventy thousand dollars for school capital. This past spring and we're on tonight's agenda, actually looking at a capital order for the. Total schools, I think somewhere seven hundred shy of seven twenty. So so we've done as much as we can, I think, in order to get much needed capital to the schools. And and certainly appreciate, you know, the the district's work in developing a capitalist that. And then plugging, plugging in the yearly, fairly balanced yearly allotment. So so that just gives you, you know, I just wanted to give a very, very rough sense of of where I think we'll be at the end of the budget process at three point two. This is, quite frankly, much earlier for us to sort of advertise that number. But but I think, you know, thanks to Tony's work, we're we're much more confident of those those revenue figures. So I just, I just, that was really all I had, other than thank you very much for for the hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn.
Hey, thank you. Chairman Schofield, do you have anything else from the finance committee?
Council Rushden, I have nothing myself at the moment. I know that the committee will have a chance here in the near future to dig deeply into this. At the same time, you know, this is kind of a unique opportunity that I would, if there is any member of the finance committee that has, you know, a a, like you said, a higher level question. I would like to give them the opportunity to ask that question now. Like I said, we will have plenty of time to. To discuss this. Anybody? Hey, it looks like the finance committee is good at the moment.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Is there any final comments from anyone? Casey, and then I would defer to Madam Chair King, if you would like to adjourn your your committee.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Rushden, and I just want to thank you for inviting the school committee and Mr. Swenson here tonight. I really appreciate everyone's comments, questions and input as we go into the budget process. Again, like I said, we do have a subcommittee meeting on February fourteenth and March seventh. Prior to our March ninth public hearing where we present it. So, you know, we'll take that, all of your questions and input into account. And I will email you, Mr. Rushden, the documents we discussed, so you can just distribute them to your your town council as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. So at with that, I will adjourn my school committee meeting on February first at eight forty PM. This will be a roll call vote. Motion. By Mr. Fitzgibbons. I'm sorry, the second.
Mr. Marrero.
Sorry. I do not see Mrs. Conrad. Okay, Mr. Dolan.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Mr. Florence.
Yes.
Mrs. Holbrook.
Yes.
Mr. Marrera.
Hi.
Dr. Pre Windowski.
I.
And the chair votes aye. Again, motion passes. Thank you so much for everyone and have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman Schofield, if you'd like to adjourn.
The chair will entertain a motion.
Motion Julie, second Julie.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. McGrath, if you could do a roll call for us, please.
Mr. Schofield.
Hi.
Mr. Col Paris.
I.
Mr. Blunt.
Yes.
Miss Miss Pagon.
Hi.
Mr. Noel.
Hi.
Thank you. The motion was approved. Meeting is adjourned.
Okay, thank you, everyone. See you Wednesday.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, moving back to the agenda, just to make sure I'm on track, G license transactions, we have none. Moving on, H presentations, we have none. Moving on to town manager report, first item is Mitchell School update.
Thank you, Mr. President. Very little of. Very little to report on the Mitchell School. Everything is going on as as planned and as scheduled. The mechanicals continue to go in. The the Saturday snowstorm caused no damage. Other than it needs to be removed so that some of the roofing work that needs to be finalized can be finalized. HVAC duct work is going in. The mechanical room is being outfitted. Fire protection is being installed. Brick veneer continues to go up depending on the weather. Timeline is still good and a projected completion date of July twenty twenty-two. And anybody that needs more information, oh, I'm sorry, the next meeting, the school building committee is Monday, February seventh. Next week at six thirty, and anybody needs more information, bridwaterschoolproject.com, but happy to answer any questions.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions from the council?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Council George.
Do you, yeah, do you, Mr. Dot, Mr. Dutton, can we work on rescheduling the tour? Probably for a couple of weeks, but I I would love to get in there and take a look around, but obviously mother nature's got to. Cooperate. So if we can work on that, that'd be great.
Absolutely. I actually have, I've been trying to coordinate something with the OPM on that, so so I certainly haven't forgotten. I I too would like to get in and see it, so point well taken.
Okay, any other questions? Then we'll move on to COVID nineteen update.
COVID nineteen are official numbers, what I call our official numbers, which are, as you very well know, probably. Far from from accurate, but in order of magnitude, those have dropped roughly in half from where we were. So that is good news. That tells me that this this latest variant is beginning to peter out. There are no, as I mentioned over the past few weeks, we have no hospitalizations that we know of. Vaccination rates are unchanged. We continue for the next couple of weeks, we we will continue to have staff. Wear masks in public places in the public buildings. And so we will continue to do that just for the next few weeks unless something changes. Excuse me. We have secured test kits from Plymouth County. And just a few minutes before the meeting started, we were able to set up a distribution plan and a distribution site. Those kits will be distributed tomorrow, Wednesday, February second. So that's tomorrow, Wednesday, February second, from noon to six PM at the Bridgewater Senior Center. I'll repeat that again. Test kits will be available to Bridgewater residents tomorrow, Wednesday, February second, from noon to six PM. At the Bridgewater Senior Center. It's a drive-through operation. People don't have to get out of their cars. They simply drive. As instructed around the building and they will be given test kits. So we will limit, tentatively limit the number of total kits, or two to a kit. We'll limit that to four people, I'm sorry, four per car. And just to make sure that we have enough for for all. And folks should be prepared to show Bridgewater residency. But that that is what we are doing. We'll get that out this evening on the website and also on social media. So that as many people as possible can can know that they can pick them up. We do have several town offices have some, a couple of cases. So we have a couple in my office, a couple in the health office, the senior center itself has some. The library has some, the Bridgewater Housing Authority will distribute to to their residents. But the the major operation will be tomorrow, February second, Wednesday, from noon to six at the senior center. So happy, happy to report that.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions from the council?
I would only, Mr. President, I would only add one thing. The, I know there have been some questions about cleanup in Central Square and snow removal that is going on. We'll begin in probably about an hour and go all night. We'll be removing snow from the central square area and also getting the sidewalks more cleaned up. Started that operation early today and will continue that, so.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no questions or comments, I'll move on to the fiscal twenty twenty-three budget.
Alright. So I have, I don't have, actually don't have a whole lot more to say. I did submit the February preliminary budget and as I mentioned, we do have a higher degree of confidence that this is a more accurate. Reflection of our, both our twenty twenty-three revenue and our twenty twenty-three spending. Obviously, there's a long way to go between now and and when the council gets it for for on April first. So as the superintendent mentioned, there's there's some, a lot of discussion that will go on. Between now and then, but we are fairly confident that we'll see new growth of nine hundred forty thousand, as I mentioned. We are fairly, we are taking the governor's numbers right now, which is our practice. Historically, those numbers have been slightly low, either at what we get or slightly lower than what we got. And we're looking at two point seven percent increase to unrestricted local aid. We're looking at. At least a little bit of a bump in our estimates on local receipts. And we are also reducing what we normally would. Transfer from ambulance receipts. We saw, I think as the council knows, we saw a reduction in ambulance receipts over COVID. Very lately, we have seen some rebound there, but for right now, we're projecting. A billion, little over a million five transfer from ambulance receipts. We will, at least as of now, we'll be looking to tap ARPA funds for lost revenue, specifically for the ambulance. Four hundred thousand and and then we're not changing any of the indirect costs that we take out of the enterprise funds. So so that's sort of on the revenue side. We're not proposing any radical changes on the expense side. Obviously, we've got some changes due to the implementation of a DPW. So there might be some shuffling around there, but I think overall, our budget goals for twenty twenty-three are going to be maintain what we have. Make sure that we can be efficient and effective in the delivery of of our services, the services that we do offer. We do look at twenty twenty-three as an opportunity to implement better means of performance. Better means of measuring performance and so each department will be charged with establishing. A means to measure performance through the twenty twenty-three budget. Let's see. We do know that we have sizable service gaps, mostly in the DPW area, so we'll be looking at filling those also in the town buildings. Area, some of our chronic service gap areas, which I think we're making good progress trying to reduce. Reduce the gaps there. As well in in town buildings and grounds. So that's, those are basically areas that are, will be our focus. We will make some shuffling around in the budget as we do every year, just to account for the needs. Areas of of town government, but not looking at any. Any radical changes on the expense side. So that's really all I have. You should have gotten an email or you will get an email, which gives you the. Sources and uses and also just sort of a brief budget message for the preliminary budget. So that is really all I have for that.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the council?
Yes.
Council.
Thanks. You know, Mike, we don't give you the opportunity to really do a needs-based budget, but now is your opportunity to say, if you were to expand, you know, staffing levels, where would your priorities be and what type of positions would you like to see added to the town?
That's a loaded question. So I think, I think it's no secret that we are understaffed in our roadways division. I think to the extent that we saw an increase in staffing, you know, that's probably where it would be. We have some other needs across, across the town. You know, certainly, we, we need to do a better job with our HR. You know, we certainly need to do a better job probably in our water and sewer. We operate on pretty much skeleton crews there. But I will tell you that one of the challenges, and I think the superintendent mentioned that, one of the challenges that we face, and, and you can see it in, in our roadways operation, is that we have, we have available positions that are fully funded and we can't find the people. So it's, it's, it, that really is a challenge. It's not only a challenge, you know, with, with education, it's a challenge right across the board. We, we really are challenged in finding people that, that can fill these jobs, qualified people that can fill a lot of these jobs, so. But I, I would say, you know, that's sort of an aside, but I think to answer Counselor Wood's question, I think, I think our, our focus really would be and continues to be, I'm not saying it's not there, but would be roadways. If I were to pick one, one particular department.
Any other questions, Council? Okay, any other questions or comments from the council?
Thank you through you to the town manager. So, Mr. Dutton, we kind of, this is just for the future. We've kind of gotten off track of having department heads come to a meeting, kind of give an overview, you know, let, let us just bounce questions off. I think this would be a very opportune time to bring that back in. Especially since we have a preliminary budget, it would probably be advantageous to have probably police chief, fire chief. Not, not that they have to come and defend the budget, but for us just to get an update from their departments as well as maybe to Mr. Woods, you know, vein of question, if we had unlimited resources, what would be things that we could help you attain? So we did that for a while. I know things kind of got messed up, but I'd like to, to see that back in the future.
No, good, good point. I think also getting committees back in front of the council will be another important piece, too, but we'll, we'll make sure that happens.
Any other questions or comments? I can't see all of you, so just speak up if you'd like to speak. I don't see that anybody, so go ahead and move on. Under discussions, first item we've already discussed, moving on to item B. Using city versus town in the town charter, defer to Council Moore.
Right, so maybe if I could just share a few sort of discussion aids that I pulled together here. Hopefully you can see that. So my, my intention with this, and actually the next agenda item too, isn't necessarily to get into the deep discussion tonight, but I want to give you information that you can think about. And my hope is that we can set these up as topics for an upcoming workshop, so sort of think of this as just maybe a primer with, with some background information to consider, and I'll distribute these after, and we can put them in the meeting notes as well. So th- this first one, I think, as everyone knows, the Charter Review Committee came back with a lot of recommendations, but one of them in particular was that we change all instances of the word town to the word city in the charter. And so I just want to kind of share a little bit of background. I think everyone knows this, but for the sake of those listening. You know, by charter, Bridgewater has a city form of government, so the state sort of thinks of us, I guess, as a city. In the way that we're organized and we run ourselves is, is the way that a city would. But when we chose that, that form of government, we intentionally said, but we still want to maintain our identity as a town. We want to be called the town of Bridgewater. So in our charter, we have a city form of government, and we've said, but we want to be called the town of Bridgewater. And so I think when reviewing the document, the Charter Review Committee saw maybe a mismatch in this form of government versus the language we use. And so they're proposing a lot of changes in the charter, to use the new words, so we would be called the city council, we would be us on the call, would be city counselors, the city managers, city clerk. You know, we'd be the city of Bridgewater, and even just kind of where we normally use the word town, like town elections, you know, that'll now be city elections. And so the reason I'm bringing this to the committee, this is actually something that's in front of the Rules and Procedures Subcommittee right now. But for us to actually adopt this change, there's about six hundred and fifty different places in the charter that we need to actually make the change. And so before we go through the exercise of like really unwrapping this, I, I do want to just kind of get the town council's perspective on this, you know, yours, and then the residents sort of through you, through, through a workshop. And then maybe if I could just highlight a few other kind of quick facts for consideration. So we're not the only town, we're not the only municipality that has chosen the city form of government but calls itself a town. We're one of fourteen, I think as of two thousand sixteen, so I think we're still about that number. And, and generally, we sort of hear these two opinions. I think people that are for it are saying, you know, we're a city, it's sort of about time, we just kind of match the terminology with our form of government. And then we've also heard that this might actually simplify some interactions with the state. On the other side, you know, the residents who have reached out or, or the conversations we've had in subcommittee. You know, there was some concern about if we made this change, kind of what would all the impacts be? Do we, do we know them all? So things like, you know, would we have to change our town seal and signage, that sort of thing? There's also a perspective that, you know, we're not really fixing an issue with this change, like nothing's really broken. But it's a big impactful change. And then the last thing, and I think this is the one I've heard most frequently, is residents in the town identify with this sort of rural identity, right? So the idea of town as a part of our identity is a real thing for some people, for some residents, and so that, that opinion has been voiced. And so again, I'm not necessarily looking for feedback in this meeting, although people are welcome to share their ideas. But I do want to share this with you just so that I can distribute it to you and you can consider it, and maybe we could set up a workshop, you know, the next week or so. So I'll stop there. Any thoughts on that or support for the workshop idea? Matt, do you? Bill has his hand raised.
Yeah, sorry, I can't see him. Go ahead and speak up if you would like to say something. Go ahead, Council.
Yeah, a couple, couple small points. I, I am interested in, in running a, you know, we're, we're, you know, participating in workshop on topics like this. I think that you know, it's good, and, and when we get to the next agenda item, you know, it's good to have a, a less structured discussion on some of these topics, just so we can I hear from, from all sides. You know, our charter, as everyone knows, was voted in April of two thousand ten. And it, it says in the incorporation on literally page two, you know, we are, we will have a constitutionally have a city form of government. And as Mr. Moore says, you know, that does impact how we interact with the state. We don't need to pass legislation before Attorney General's Office, for example. But it also specifically says, you know, shall continue to be a body politic and corporate known as the town of Bridgewater. And every time I interact with various people around town, including my own family, we like the sense that it's a town. We understand that it's a city form of government. But it's historically been a town, even though we don't have that town meeting, you know, structure in place anymore. We do have the central square, we do have our business area, we do have other things that, that kind of make us a town. And I, I reached out to Ed of Aldi earlier today, and he couldn't make it to the meeting, and I won't read his email, but basically, he, he's also says there are other towns that have adopted city form of government and stayed as a town, and there are some towns that adopted and then changed it to call it city. And it seemed inconsistent based on size of the town. I think for the town of Bridgewater, from what I've been hearing from all the people that I've talked to, they're more comfortable with just continuing with the town of Bridgewater. And it doesn't seem to impact us financially or structurally or anything else, so. But I do believe that we should go into a workshop forum for some of these discussions. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, Mr. President, I mean, I think it should stay the same. I don't think we need to change, change at all the city. I agree with. I agree, people still identify Bridgewater as a town. I think the language in our charter is pretty much similar than, to the, to the town of Braintree, who's known as the town, the city known as the town of Braintree, where the city known as the town of Bridgewater. And I like to, I like to keep the language the way it is. Unless we want to elect a mayor, then we can change everything.
Mr. President. Council Chase, go ahead.
Thank you very much. I, I am in favor of the workshop. I think it would be a useful tool for us to really really solicit all opinions on this and to consider it more thoroughly than we can here at the moment. I've already made known, and I stand by my previous statements, I, I personally don't see the need for the change to use of the term city. And I, I think that most residents are really very comfortable with one, the fact that we are a city, we use a city form of government, and two, that we still call ourselves a town. So that's my only comment, and I thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I, this is, okay, I just wanted to also echo the sentiment. The word city for the, for Bridgewater just doesn't feel right to me. I, I would certainly lean toward keeping it a town, but I would be in favor of a, of a workshop to further, you know, vet it on out and have a discussion. I mean, just looking at a, a quick definition from Google, and it says, you know, large urban area with greater geographical area, higher population, the population density, and is more developed than a town, so it doesn't even seem to fit by definition that Bridgewater is, is a city at this stage of the game, so. Again, I tend to lean toward remaining town and keeping terminology as is, but I would still be in favor of a, a brief workshop discussion on this. Thank you.
Yeah, and I believe, you know, both myself and Council Moore, who's really done an incredible job in this area the last several months, were discussing some dates that I would just throw out to the council that, you know, probably as quickly as tomorrow, would be looking at the eighth, next Tuesday, of doing a remote workshop, so we can have a more detailed discussion, particularly given the hour this evening. Defer back to Council Moore.
Hey, thank you all for the opinion. So maybe if we could move forward then with the eighth, and we'll work on scheduling outside of this meeting. Mr. President, should I move to the next agenda item?
Absolutely, and we're going to move on to, next item in discussions is charter change, update and approach options, Council.
So this is a similar sort of extension of the last discussion. So I think everyone knows, you know, every, I think it's six years, seven residents get together, then look at our charter, and they recommend changes. That happens, they spent about a year and a half, I think, or two years, and presented something back to the council last June. Councils George and Gallagher took some, some great first steps to take some of the key ideas from that, put them into ordinances, and we've been looking at those in the Rules and Procedures Committee. So of all of the ones that, that made it to us, I think there were maybe ten or twelve, maybe. All but three have actually been acted on in that committee, decisioned, and are ready to come back to the council. I did request that we hold them, because any one of those going on its own is potentially disconnected from another. So we do, I do think we need to sort of like look at them as a group. And I will note that there are, in total, if you look at all the changes, there are about ninety material changes. This is a rough guess, but generally about ninety changes in that charter, where the words that are cha- that, that we pick change the way our government works. It's a date, some, in some areas, and it's a big section in others, but it changes the way that we operate. And so of those nineties changes, about eighty are still sort of sitting on the page, and we haven't acted on them. And frankly, it's, it's a large amount of work, and the process we've been using might not be the most effective one to get, get through it, so. Long story short, we would like to add this as a topic to the workshop to share a few ideas we have on a way to maybe get through this a little more efficiently. And, and, and I think we just frankly need your, your guidance and your, like, some back and forth thought on this before we continue down the path that we've been on. So the ask here is, you know, can we add an agenda item to talk through a, an approach for charter changes like this, of this scale? This is a massive scale. So maybe if I could turn it back to you, Mr. President, to see if there are any comments?
Sure, absolutely, and I would just add, Council Moore, that my intention is really just set an agenda, the workshop of charter changes to encompass everything, and, and certainly understand that if we don't work through all of the discussions and need to hold a second workshop, I'm totally fine with that. I just want to stay on track, but I would open it up to any comments from the council. Looking real quick, I don't see any. Okay, Council Moore, thank you. We appreciate all of the time and effort and energy so far.
Thank you.
Moving on to committee reports, do we have any committee reports? I'm not seeing any, nothing on the agenda. Moving on to legislation for action. First item, A, Order Zero FY twenty-two dash zero three four, Acceptance of Non-Recurring Revenue and Capital. At their meeting held on one twenty-four twenty-two, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three to recommend to approve. Finance Committee voted seven to approve on one twelve twenty-two. It's an emotional approve.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, move for roll call vote.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
And Mr. George?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
N B Order Zero FY twenty-two dash zero three five, contractual buyouts. The meeting held on one twenty-four twenty-two, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three to recommend approval. The Finance Committee voted six to approve on one twelve twenty-two. Motion approved.
So moved.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, move for roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
And Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Moving on, Item Order Zero FY twenty-two dash zero three six, Acceptance of Donation. Resident at their meeting held on one twenty-four twenty-two, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three to recommend approval. The Finance Committee voted seven to approve on one twelve twenty-two. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, move for roll call vote.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
And Mr. George?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Item D, Order Zero FY twenty-two dash zero three seven, Acceptance of Donation. Chakrenz at their meeting held on one twenty-four twenty-two, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three to recommend approval. And the Finance Committee voted six to approve on one twelve twenty-two. It's an emotional approve.
So moved.
Second, okay, any discussion? Seeing none, move for roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
And Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Item E, Order Zero FY twenty-two dash zero three eight, Capital Plan Fall twenty twenty-two. At their meeting held on one twenty-four twenty-two, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three to recommend approval. The Finance Committee voted four to two to approve on one twelve twenty-two. At their meeting held on one twenty-four twenty-two, the budget and finance committee voted three to recommend approval. The finance committee voted four to two to approve on one twelve twenty-two. And a motion to send to advertising.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, Mr. President.
Counsel Moore, Counsel Moore.
Yep, um, I'd actually like to, if I could make a motion to amend, I'd like to remove project three hundred dot twenty-seven. And reduce the transfer by that amount. I am in favor of the track. It is, uh, we heard earlier, I've been asking for a while to try to understand what that plan actually is. But I just feel like we're being asked to commit a half a million dollars and we really just haven't had the opportunity to discuss it. So I'm, I'm looking not to permanently remove it, but take it out of this stage. And then we can reintroduce it in a few weeks when we've sort of. When we've actually digested and had a chance to kind of question the plan.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a first, we have a second, any discussion?
So, Mr. President?
Uh, of, uh, Counsel, uh, Counsel what?
Uh, I, I just continue. So, so the discussion tonight was, was great, um, you know, earlier when we talked about the budget, but to me. The track seems like it's, it's not quite in the final planning stages. You know, we heard comments like they're still working with the, the sales guy on some of the features. Um, I, I would like, uh, you know, a firmer understanding of what the, the project entails and maybe a, a firmer number. That we could commit to, um, just before this. I, I don't think there's any. You know, there's harm and there, I don't think there's any harm in, in waiting, um, until they've worked out some more details. Like in the, uh, plant, um, that we talked about last week. You know, it, it seems like it's still early stage, maybe some of the numbers fairly firm, but. Let's get to the ninety percent, um, or, or higher before we, um, decide to commit. I'm, I'm in favor of the track. I'd just like to see a, a good number being presented. Thanks.
And Counsel George?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, um, I, I would actually, um. Be opposed to that and the reason being is, um, I don't recall which school committee meeting. This track project was brought up, but it was brought up in very intricate detail. I don't necessarily think tonight. We gave any indication that we would want a super comprehensive plan for the track. I think we've also budgeted funds for projects that weren't to the level of ninety percent. But we knew that they were on the right track. So I think it's a little unfair to take this presentation and to pull a budget number because. The information wasn't as complete as what people want, when we never gave any indication that we were looking for that level of detail. Um, so I'll be voting against that. Thank you.
Mr. President. Okay, I'm just gonna, um, allow Counsel Moore to just respond.
Yeah, and, and so I, I have been asking for details on this. I asked the school committee and received none. Um, I asked the superintendent and until today, received none. So, uh, I recognize that there's probably been previous discussion. I think my, my biggest concern here is actually tied to the fact that it's an eight lane track. Um, so I went out and actually did some research. I said, what, what, like, why is this a thing? And if you look at it, um, all of the surrounding high schools around us have six lane tracks. And the reason they have six lanes track, tracks is because there, it's a more reasonable upfront cost. But more importantly, when it comes time to resurface, it's tens of thousands, and in some cases hundreds of thousands of dollars less. To resurface a six lane track than an eight lane track. So around us, the only place that has an eight lane track is the college that has the funds to support this. The other thing that he had mentioned is it could be a, a stream of revenue. For it to be a stream of revenue, it needs bleachers. It needs to be an event destination. And I don't, I don't know if this plan includes bleachers. I don't know if we're now buying all of the extra equipment for the seventh and eighth lanes that we wouldn't have paid for before. And so, so I think, you know, to Counselor George's great point, we, we haven't asked questions before, but I think I never asked questions before because I just assumed that the diligence had been done. And now I'm, I mean, we're literally hearing in real time that the salesperson said that the eight thing was the better one than the six today. I mean, I, so, so I, I'm just a little nervous. It's such a big investment. I just would love just a week or two to just kind of digest it. And then, and then we can vote. I mean, I, I, I like the idea of the track. I don't like the idea of the Rolls Royce version of the track and I just want to make sure we're not buying that.
Counsel, Counsel Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I, I agree with Counselor George. I mean. I don't think it's our role really to get into the micromanagement of each. Individual piece of capital that the town manager has put forth to us. We didn't ask any questions about the. H R I S software for eighty thousand. These are all estimates. None of these are going to come in at the exact amount. Of money that's been appropriated. Hopefully they'll come in less. Uh, but there's always those times where the money's transferred. So we didn't ask the I T department. They weren't in front of us so we could go through. And ask them, well, do you really need that? That's really not our role. Um, we didn't ask, you know, the police department or the fire department or any of the other departments in here, didn't come before us. This is something the town manager put forth as is his role. The fact of the matter is, is we had the school department in here tonight, giving us an open and an honest and a transparent. Uh, joint meeting where we were able to ask questions. So I, I think it's a little disingenuous to try to pull one particular thing out of here. Just because we got a pretty good transparent, uh, answer from the school superintendent. The track was put in here. Uh, because of the need for it. And I know he said that he got estimates in, they were a little less and he got into the, he got into more detail about whether it's six or eight lanes. That's not our job. It's not our job to say, well, I'm going to disapprove this or want to pull this back because I think six lanes is better than eight lanes or whatever. That's not our role. So I hope this goes forward as, as presented by the town manager tonight. Thank you.
Counsel Perry.
Thank you. Uh, I tend to lean to that as well. I mean, you know, again, I don't think we need to decide either way if it's six or eight lanes, but. On that vein, it is currently a, an eight lane track. So as he, as the superintendent stated. It has a foundation for an eight lane track. You'd have to change the, the, the base of it to now accommodate a smaller six lane track. So I think the, the, the money is whether we do six or eight lanes is pretty much negligible because of the fact that it's already a pre-existing eight lane track. Um, and the thing is in dire need of repair. It's been in repair for, you know, he mentioned the past five or six years and it goes back probably even before that. So I would certainly be, you know, negligent to, to pull it back from this particular, uh, budget, uh, list because, uh, I, I do think it's. It's that important. Um, I do think that we've got a pretty good. Estimate on the number as, as Counsel Gallagher has said, it might come in a little less, a little bit more. Um, but I think it's probably the ballpark number. Um, so I'm, I'm just in favor of going forward with it as listed in the, uh. In the, uh, in the packet here. So thank you.
Counsel what?
Yeah, um, first a question to our town manager. Uh, Michael, did you receive any sort of information backing this number? It's on the capital plan or is it just part of the school project?
So the, the school and the school committee, uh, forwards us a capital plan and then, uh, we, you know. Talk with the school or talk with the business. Director at the school, the superintendent to figure out what we're going to put on the capital plan each step of the way. So as I think you probably recall. Um, there was, I think tennis courts was, uh, originally on, uh, a prior capital plan. Which, uh, the school decided that they were not going to do. Uh, and in place of that, they wanted to accelerate, uh, the track project. So that, that's why you see it on, on this, uh, capital plan.
Okay, so I, I think, um, and, and I understand Counselor Gallagher's, you know, comments and, and, uh. Uh, Counselor George's, but, um. What Counselor Moore is asking for is to delay the vote on this particular thing for a couple of weeks. To get better information and better insight as to what the number means because remember it's not. It's not a, you know, five hundred thousand dollar track, it's eight hundred thousand dollar track. And we're not responsible for it. So. Um, unlike the other things that the town manager can get us an assessment for, like the H R I S software is a license. We know what that fee is going to be. We know what the, uh, you know, the leases are going to be. Those are solid numbers. It's a hundred percent. They're not going to change. But this number is still a little bit uncertain because as we heard specifically tonight. They're still talking with the team that's going to make the pitch for the proposal. Now I'd just like to get to the point where they actually have a little bit better number. Before we commit to, to backing it because a few weeks ago it was the tennis court and this week it's the track. And maybe it's a six lane track, maybe it's an eight lane track, maybe it has a pit, maybe it doesn't. Um, you know, I'm again in support of the notion of, of, you know, improving the track, bringing it back. And having a track there, but, um, I think the number is highly uncertain at this point.
Counsel George?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I, I'm, I'm a little confused in this regard. So. I believe that a few years ago, we approved a thirty-three million dollar wastewater treatment proposal. And now we're faced with a forty-four million dollar proposal. But we didn't have any level of discussion like this on that, yet now we're talking about a track that the school committee's vetted. That is on the, is on the school capital plan that got accelerated. And we're going to hold this up for one item. I think to Counselor Gallagher's point, it's totally inappropriate for this town council to do that. Thank you.
Counsel Columbodas?
Um, I have a procedural question. Is there anything precluding us from withdrawing, you know? Taking this item out and adding it in later? Is there any procedural? Barrier to us doing that?
The, the only, the only procedural pla- um, issue I see is in the adoption of the capital improvement program and under the, the charter. You clearly can amend by taking things out. But you, i- it's not clear if you can, if you can add back in. I think you probably can so long as you don't increase. The top figure of the capital plan. So. So for example, as long as the two million five oh two three fifteen sixty-one does not increase. Um, you probably can remove it and put it back in. Um, I think the problems come if you increase that. So. So I think as long as the amendment is taking this out and then you maybe subsequently amend. The top line figure, if you're not going to put it back in, or you're going to put it in under some different amount that's less than that, you're probably okay procedurally.
Okay. So I, so I don't see any harm in, in choosing that path. It's just waiting two weeks and getting more information and if. If we decide we're good with it in a week or two, we can add it back in.
Counsel Perry?
Uh, thank you. Uh, through to the town attorney. Um, so what would the procedure be if we left it in as is? And the number came back later needing a little bit more or our percentage was a little bit more? How would that work, Attorney Rollins?
Well, you can't, you can't increase. So your amendment just can't increase that top dollar figure. So that would be problematic.
And what if it became up as a higher number?
Right, that would become problematic and you probably need some sort of additional supplemental appropriation as we've done in the past with some other things where that happened. Um, but that top line figure can't increase as stated under the charter. What it says is you can amend. The capital plan by decreasing things, um, but that, that top line figure can't increase. So. Um, you, maybe you find it elsewhere in that same budget, right? In the same capital plan and then you offset it. Um, that, that would be a possibility you could, you could possibly undertake and find. Um, but I would say, you know, as long as that top line figure doesn't change, you guys can do what you want with those other numbers. Um, I think, I think you're fine.
But if we take it out now, obviously that number comes down, you know, to under two million dollars.
Well, yeah, so technically that's true, but I, I think if you're doing this from like a procedural stance. And you're, you're not amending the top figure, but you're amending that figure. Um, only for tonight, right? Until we get to the next stage. Um, I think, I think we're fine, right? Because you, you're taking out, you're not adding in.
Right, but if we're voting on a two point five number, we're basically assuming that line item is going to be the same number. And I think we're stuck again if we come back in two weeks and we find the numbers higher.
Well, well, hopefully, hopefully that doesn't happen. I think that's why everyone's gone through this exercise. I think Michael and the finance team has probably been. Doing this pretty extensively. He can probably speak more to that than me that any number is going to increase here, but, um.
I, I like then we should hold off on voting on the entire capital plan for two weeks.
Well, you certainly could do that. You certainly could continue it for two weeks. There's no doubt about that.
Because that potential number could change.
Absolutely, well.
I mean, the, the entirety of the number.
Not at, not at your vote it can, at.
No, that's what I'm saying. So we shouldn't even vote on a number until we know a specific number on the track.
That's not a bad idea.
That we're talking about.
Correct. Correct.
We, we don't have specific numbers on anything on this thing. We have no specific numbers on this. These are all estimates.
They really are. Yeah, they are. That's right.
So, um, just a, a follow-up on that, Mr. President, back to the town manager. Um, uh, Mr. Town Manager, do you have a relative degree of certainty on this number that was submitted by the, uh, school committee? Uh, as far as our, our cost on this?
So could I just, could I just jump in real quick? Michael, could I just jump in real quick? I, I really think we're beating around the bush on this subject. We need to move it. He, here's where I'm at and we should be as a council. I am torn with, um, the amendment, uh, proposed by Counselor Moore because I understand and have been involved in the frustration in terms of getting information. But, you know, we're sitting here with this order, ready to go to advertisement. It's been in front of budget and finance. It's been in front of the finance committee. Um, all of the things listed on here and estimates, the due diligence, we've left that responsibility to a number of individuals, people who were elected and appointed. Uh, both employees who have paid employees of the regional district, uh, the school committee, their sub, uh, budget and finance committee. Um, if they come back in the track, uh, the allocation of funds is not enough to, it's going to be the district's problem to figure that out. And, and at that point, whether they're out of money and have to go from eight to six. I initially thought we're division one high school. The eight lanes, and that's why when we look around, we don't see many of the six lane tracks that we're required to have eight lanes, but. As a member of the council, I don't want to be involved in that level of detail because I have faith that the people who are elected to those roles. To have that, uh, judicial responsibility about what we're doing in the regional district, that they've done their due diligence. I would be more in favor of holding up the entire capital plan for two weeks if the town manager says. This isn't going to present major problems on the town side. Rather than pulling one piece out, uh, to some of the points that have made. I think if we pull the entire capital plan and just sit on it for two more weeks. We're not sending the message that pulling out one item out of capital plan, looking for information might send. To, uh, the friends that we're trying to build relationships with the district as we go through the budgeting process. I, I feel like it's going to set a sour tone. Through this entire fiscal, um, budget process with the entire district. And so I, I would hope that you'd all just consider. My few comments there. And I defer to town manager, sorry.
If I could, just, just a reminder that, um, your potential vote tonight was to send it to advertising for hearing. You could, if you choose, it's up to you. You can defer, uh, for, for, uh, till next meeting. Uh, on that vote to send it to advertising or you can send it to advertising, um, have the hearing. If you choose at that point to amend. Um, then it would not require, um, further hearing because you're reducing the, the, uh, the amount of the order. Um, but that would allow the process to continue and hopefully allow you to get more information between now, uh, and next meeting.
Yeah, and I, you know, i- if I understand you correctly, I, again, I don't like the image of the council sending this to advertising and then later debating and pulling money out of. I, I would prefer that as a collective group that we just, uh, defer this vote for two weeks, uh, come back and hopefully Counselor Moore and the rest of the council has the information. They need to make, uh, it's tough to make a decision without the information. So I understand Counsel Moore's, um. Issue here, but I, I just hate to pull it out separately. Counsel Columbodas?
I motion to postpone to a date certain, next meeting.
Okay, so we're in discussion on Counselor Moore's amendment. So why don't we just move?
We need to, but, deal with that first, yeah.
Yeah, is there any further discussion on the amendment by Counselor Moore?
Hey, I'm excited to say one, yeah. I appreciate the feedback from everybody. Clearly I'm new at this and I'm, I'm also sort of learning the process. Um, but, but I think for me, you know, I, I think the biggest item on the bill, and I have done diligence on the other ones. But the biggest item on the bill seems to be something that we should at least sort of know about. Um, so that, that's really the only place I'm coming from. I'm not looking distressed relationships or any of the rest of it. I'm just learning, looking to make sure that we, we make a good decision here. I'm just learning, looking to make sure that we we make a good decision here. Yeah.
Oh, totally understand. Council what?
Yeah, I I can support your idea, uh, Mr. President. I I I'm just looking for all the numbers to be at the ninety percent level. Um, and and if the number is at the ninety percent level, then let's just see some background or or have people confirm that. Uh, because you know, I I just don't, it is the largest item here. And um, you know, it's it, there seems to be some uncertainty. Um, addressed tonight about what's in the package. And I don't, you know, that's their business, what's in the package, but the the number here just needs to have a high level of certainty. And I think the rest of the numbers do. Um, and I I just want that confidence in this number, which is the largest. It's almost, it it is a what a fifth of the overall budget, right? So so let's have the confidence in it. And if we have to wait two weeks um, before voting on advertising, I could definitely support that.
Yeah, a- and I hear you. And I think the motion made by Counselor Colin Botes, certainly in my opinion. Um, keeps it as a collective thing and not a targeted thing back to the school committee. And I I'd feel much more comfortable with that. Um, with that said, on this discussion, why don't we more go ahead and move for a roll call vote on the amendment to remove?
Mister Pres- Mister President?
Yes, sir, sorry.
Um, point of information, can you give Mr. Moore the option to withdraw his motion? Instead of voting on it, you can give him that option. And then we can then we can go with Mr. Colin Botes can make the motion that he proposed. I think that would be better.
Yeah, Mr. Moore wants to withdraw. I'll withdraw my second if he wants to.
Okay.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay, excellent. Do we have another motion?
I'll second Colin Botes's uh, motion as stated prior.
Okay, we have a second. Do we have any discussion on Counselor Colin Botes's motion? Counselor Gallagher?
I'm I'm thinking, Mr. President, I'm just trying to gauge, you know, what are we looking to accomplish over the next couple of weeks? Is it? And go, I just, I'm just trying to figure this out.
I'm going to get a a more solid number for the track to make sure that we're voting on appropriate number.
Uh, I think it, and I'm going to let Counselor Moore speak to that. I think it's more than just the number that we're talking about. Um, and and my process would be to work through the town manager to the district. To get the information that the council needs to make a more informed decision around the five hundred nine thousand. Um, Council Moore.
Yeah, that that's exactly right. I think in the questions I've asked. You know, there there seems to be some things coming in, like we heard about the fence. Maybe that's in the number, maybe that's not. You know, I I think they're really early in the process. I don't know if warranty's in there. So I would just ask, you know, to get to the point where the town manager is comfortable. You know, that at least like there's diligence there and that we we feel pretty good with the number that's being proposed. Um, and just based on the communications, I'm just felt like we weren't quite there yet.
So we we will all, all the councils will get an update. As to what has transpired, or the town manager will give us an update. I don't think the town manager is uncomfortable with this. I mean.
No.
Counselor Moore and Counselor Wood are uncomfortable with this. I'm comfortable with this. But what if there's more information that comes up over within the next couple of weeks? How are we as a council going to get that information? At the next meeting or will the superintendent be here at the next meeting?
I I can, goodness, President, I can I can certainly forward any information we receive. I'll make sure that I forward that to the council where, long prior to the meeting.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Counselor George.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I I I just want to make this as a comment. Um, I can appreciate. Counselors wanting more level of detail to be comfortable with the number that's being proposed. And I I don't argue that point whatsoever. Where I will have an issue and and personally, and I'm uh, I think words of caution. Is if the actual project is cherry picked, picked apart. Shouldn't be this, shouldn't be that. To, you know, your point and to Counselor Gallagher's point. The school committee's vetted this. They've seen the need, they've approved it. The numbers need to be a little bit more solid. What I don't want to see personally is for someone to come back, propose everything. And now we're having discussions around lanes and bleachers. If they feel that the project is as it is and it's the numbers are there, then we should move on that. So that would be my comment on on a move forward.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Perry.
Yeah, and just to uh, know that the superintendent is is brought this up in a public discussion. I would not think that uh, we would be unable to get more information on this project from him over the next couple of weeks. I think he'd be uh, more forthcoming, maybe uh, more than he has been uh, to Counselor Moore. I know he said he's he's inquired but hasn't heard back. So I I think if uh, now that it's been made publicized about the project and the numbers and stuff. I think we should get this information within the next two weeks and be able to take action on this at the next meeting.
Okay, Council what?
Yeah, I I just want to make sure it's clear to the town manager. I think he's the one that should reach out. You know, we heard about a fifty thousand dollar add on for a fence. I think that should be included in the the over estimate. But in this bit, you know, I don't want to cherry pick, you know, knowing it. Me with a track and field guy. Um, but you know, it's it's there, it's there track and fields and it's theirs. But um, let's get to that that solid estimate. I think that in the two weeks, we've got two weeks. Michael needs to reach out, just get a a good idea about where they are in their status and what their confidence is and in a number, and then come back and report that to us.
I agree.
Yeah, and and I certainly get that sense in his presentation that, you know, if if this moved forward, that the superintendent through his um. Facilities director was going to able to see a considerable savings if they were able to commit sooner than later. Obviously, they're trying to line up work and it it makes sense, but um, you know, certainly having more detail. I certainly expect the town manager to be able to get some type of response from the superintendent of school committee with a more detailed layout of, you know. This particular project, but I feel very comfortable moving in this direction. Um, oh, Council Moore.
Sorry, just just one last comment. So I I completely agree. And I think to Counselor George's point, I'm certainly not looking to rather describe the project. I think what what I'm interested in is just making sure we've got the right upfront cost. And then also the long term cost of this. I think, as I understand it, these projects have big long term costs. Would love to just sort of have that on our radar. Um, as part of just the information about the project, if that's possible. I mean, I also didn't want to mean to imply that the superintendent is not providing information. It's it's not that. I just feel like it's coming in late. Um, so uh, just. Digest it.
Okay, okay, I think uh, so we have a motion. We've had a discussion here. Uh, I will move for a roll call vote.
Certainly. Mr. Columbotes?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
No.
And Mr. George? Mr. George, without a yes?
Name you, is he muted?
No.
No. So that's seven in favor, two against.
Moving on, item F, resolution R F Y twenty two dash zero zero six, a resolution establishing the town council's vision for Bridgewater. At their meeting held on one twenty twenty two, the strategic planning committee voted three to oh to recommend adoption, entertaining a motion to approve.
So I'll move second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, move for roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
And Mr. Columbotes?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero against.
Okay, item M, old business, we have none. Item N, new business. First item is A, order zero F Y twenty two dash zero four one, transfer order contractual buyouts deferred to town manager.
Uh, Mr. President, this is a transfer uh, to fund the police uh, contract. And uh, coming out of uh, the employee uh, liability trust and uh, distributed as uh, appropriate.
Okay, so on a ten emotion though, refer to budget and finance and finance committee.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? See a none move for roll call vote.
Mr. Columbotes?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
And Mr. George?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Hey, moving on, item B, order zero F Y twenty two dash zero four two, acceptance of fire safety equipment grant deferred to the town manager.
Uh, again, Mr. President, this is a uh, a uh, grant from uh, EOPS, uh, Massachusetts Department of Fire Services. And it's designed to uh, provide us additional equipment, uh, firefighting equipment that we otherwise would not get.
Excellent. Intended motion, uh, refer to budget and finance and finance committee. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? See a none move for roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
And Mr. Columbotes?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Item C, order zero F Y twenty two dash zero four three, acceptance of grant COA, MCOA, town, defer to the town manager.
Mr. President, this uh, grant is uh, coming from the Mass Council's on aging uh, organization. And is a seventy eight hundred dollar grant for the purpose of uh, essentially higher uh, stipend for hiring. Uh, interns and creating uh, new promotional materials and advertising. Um, materials for the council on aging. And I will say, I believe this and the following uh, oh forty four. Are the same, so you uh, can take this one up and refer it. And then uh, I don't believe you have to refer uh, order oh forty four.
Okay, uh, intended motion to refer to budget, finance and finance committee.
So move.
Yeah, second.
Second.
Any discussion? See a none move for roll call vote.
Mr. Columbotes?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
And Mr. George?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
And next item D, order zero F Y twenty two dash zero four four, acceptance of a grant COA FD for the town manager.
Mr. President, this uh, uh, gift from the uh, Bridgewater Police Union, uh, it should be for twenty six hundred dollars. That can be amended when it comes back to the council. Um, is represents uh, money to uh, go towards the. Replacement of the tent that was destroyed as uh, as part of the northeastern, I believe in October.
Okay, I'm just, uh, I apologize. Uh, you mentioned the uh, B P D, which is order forty five.
Oh, oh forty four, you don't need to take any action on that. It's a duplicate of oh forty three.
I apologize. Uh, I misinterpreted you. F Y twenty two dash zero four five, acceptance of COA B P D. You've uh, just explained that. So I'd say a motion for a budget, finance, finance committee.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? See a none move for roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
And Mr. Columbotes?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, moving on, uh, item F, order zero F Y twenty two dash zero four six, annual town website content cleanup. I'll defer to Council Moore.
All right, um, so just a quick background. I apologize. It's not an explanation, but I think for many residents, just our website is probably at least their first. And probably their primary interaction with the town. And I just think with all the work we have going on. It's it's important to keep the information updated and accurate there. So. Um, I also recognize that it's really difficult to do that, and it's not something that through the normal course of the day, people are probably thinking about. So I I thought it might make sense for us to sort of sponsor um, this annual website cleanup day. Where once a year, we could just ask everyone to take a look at their content area um, and just help us get it updated. And so I proposed May second, because that would give people a couple of months to just kind of think about it, maybe update it. Um, and I think for those groups that constantly update the website, great, they won't have to do anything. For those that are struggling to find time, you know, hopefully this kind of creates a day or some forgiveness to make time to just make sure it's updated. Um, so that's that's the intention of this. And you know, I I think my hope is this could be an annual thing. At the very least, you know, just kind of this intentional event to just try to get a little bit of momentum behind the website update. Um, so that's that's the intention here. And it it's calls out of like these four key areas of just making sure the contact information is at least right and current. Right, the agendas aren't, you know, are sort of in the right category, um, where there's links to important information on the projects, you know, those work. Um, and then even like some of the department descriptions might be a little older. If there's a way to update those, you know, that would be great. So that was, that was my thinking with this one and introducing it for feedback.
Thank you, Council Moore. Any discussion from the council or questions? Okay, see enough. I think it's a great idea. Appreciate the initiative in drawing it out. Um, okay, moving on, item O, citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens here for citizens' comments? Uh, Deborah, if you could help me out, um, I don't see any, but.
I do not see any either.
Okay.
No, no hands.
Everybody fell asleep. Okay, moving on, council comments. Counselor George.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, just a couple of things. One, I I want to say thank you. To all of the town employees, highway department, uh, police, fire. That um, I think just did a fantastic job during the blizzard of twenty two. Um, and you know, reading some some pretty uh, interesting stories. Also, it's really nice to see stories of of neighbors helping neighbors. Um, I probably would leave it at this too. I mean, I know that the storm has passed a few days ago. But uh, if you have neighbors that may need to be checked on, especially elderly, disabled. Uh, it would probably be a good time to go in, give give them a little check, make sure that they're not in need of any assistance. Um, and uh, as I think Mr. Dutton brought up earlier, we just need to be a little bit patient with the snow removal. Um, it's going to take a little bit of time, I think, uh, from what I've seen driving around, the removal probably of the most um. Uh, needed areas, I'll save for emergency wise, not the not not the word. But um, as they've done a good job with the major intersections, things of that nature, but obviously there's more work to do and it's going to start tonight. And let's just be patient and get there. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Gallagher.
Yeah, so similar comment. I think that I think the town uh, did an excellent job with the preparation and the cleanup. Uh, of this storm we had a couple of days ago, considering, you know, as the town manager has said that. He's down, they're down drivers to find contractors to to plow. So considering we were down equipment and so forth, I think we did a very good job in uh, cleaning the town up, getting it ready for Sunday. Um, and Monday, even though they did have to call off school for one day. Um, this was an easy, the snow was, the snow was not heavy wet snow. It was pretty light. Within the pockets of the town were without power, but for the most part, I think everybody had their power. So I think, I think it was well prepared and well executed um, storm. Let's see if we have another one. Hopefully not. That's about it.
Thank you, Counsel Gallagher.
Uh, thank you, just to extend this, the same thank you to uh, highway departments and and all the uh, plow truck drivers out there. Again, they're shorthanded. They don't have as many drivers and trucks as they need to get the job done. But in the end, they still got the job done. So a big thank you to all those that uh, got our town cleaned up. I was uh, out of town for the weekend. I got out of here before the storm hit, but I was able to get back in town relatively easily, thanks to their work. So again, big thank you to those uh, involved. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Chase.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just a a quick thank you to the uh, to the school committee, to uh, Superintendent Swenson. Uh, and to the uh, the finance committee members who were here with us tonight. Um, I think it was a productive meeting. I I I certainly look forward to hearing uh, annually. What what are the identified needs of uh, the school system of the of the district? And I appreciate um, uh, the detailed responses that Superintendent Swenson uh, had provided to us. That's all.
Thank you, Counsel Souza.
Well, I'm not going to repeat what everyone else said. Uh, but I am going to say if there are fire hydrants in your area that have not been dug out. Please go out there and dig them out. It should be a three foot path from the. It should be a three-foot path from the street to the fire hydrant and three feet around it. But more important than that, the storm drains are all plugged up with snow. We got rain coming. If you don't want flooding, get out there and clean the storm drain. I've already cleaned the one in front of my house. That's a fire hydrant in the storm drain. So let's, let's work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Suzo, Counsel Moore.
Also wanted to thank the school committee for coming tonight. I appreciated the transparency and the ideas. I look forward to getting a more information about the outcomes. So how are we sort of measuring? School performance, those sorts of things, and I look forward to them showing that in the future. I also was really impressed with the work to clean up after the storm. As others have said, I know they were long hours. You know, there were, there were, it was just a hard task overall, and I think they did amazing. And actually, to the town manager, I really appreciated the video updates, and I thought he did an excellent job sort of keeping people updated on, on where things were. So thank you for that. I think that's it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Moore. Counsel what?
Thanks. Yeah, it's good to hear that Central Square is going to get taken care of tonight. There was a lot of concern about that and. But overall, given the, the drop in number of contractors and, and the storm size, I thought the town did. Excellent job clearing the, clearing the streets overall. I, I will point out, and this is just a, a thought. And maybe, you know, if somebody wants to reach out to me, we can discuss this more, but. There are other towns, West Bridgewater being one, that have safety protocols for private roads. Now, we know that private roads. Are not plowed by the town. Per, per policy, but. West Bridgewater has a policy, a safety policy to at least take down the snow. To, or open up the ends of the roads to make sure the safety vehicles can get down those, those private roads. And someone reached out during the storm to me, or after the storm with pictures, and I've started. Sent those to town manager. The town completely plowed in their, their road. And it's unclear who's responsible for clearing that, so that becomes a problem for the residents who are renting. You know, this is, so we should probably talk about that at some point. The. The, a little bit of background noise there. I, I would like to add to the town manager update going forward. So that we can hear about the charter items that are at the state level. I don't know what the status is. I think it's on, it's important to all of us. I don't think that many people know that they're not even voting for counselors in April, and that is going to be delayed. I know it's going to take several meetings of this body before we hear results. But I would like to see, you know, continued progress and hear what the updates are and impediments, if there are those. Um, next, it's great to have a, a vision for the town. I think that. We need to expand that vision structure to all the committees, not just our committees, but. You know, private, private membership committees. Have them really articulate their mission statements and their visions as well, because it should all, it should all fit together, just like a, a good jigsaw puzzle. But one of those things that I would like to see, I don't know if we'll ever see that. But moving the train station back to the center of town, I think really aids in, in that vision. Creates a more vibrant downtown. It also eliminates some of the parking issues that we see between our municipal lots and the college lots. And the trade-offs of, of where those cars sit. And it, that's all tied to this last question, which is, where's my tunnel? So I put together a legislative piece of, you know, an item, and it's gone into, I think, public safety, and it's just kind of sitting there. So I can't speak about the tunnel. I can't address the tunnel. You know, you get a gag order on me about this tunnel. But if we move the train, we won't need a tunnel. So there's the incentive, and, and that's it for tonight. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Counsel Columbotes.
Um, I'd just like to remind citizens about an issue that came up earlier, and that is that the. The, the senior center is kind of acting as a clearinghouse for seniors who might need help digging out from the snow and. That high school students can get. I forgot. Yeah, for helping out. So if anyone, young people with some energy and strong backs. Care to serve the community and serve some people who can't dig themselves out from the snow. I'd advise them to contact the senior center to see how they can help out. That's all. Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you. I just have one brief comment, just to talk about some of the restructuring that the town manager has been able to accomplish. In the fire department in particular. And tonight, you know, when we look at the acceptance of the fire safety grant, it's a direct result of having. A reorganization of staff that are able to spend the time on things like this when we look at a nineteen thousand dollar grant, and there's been several. So I'm just very pleased to see that that structure is actually working to benefit the town. Certainly, one, it helps us with money, but two, more importantly, helps us to purchase safety equipment for the vehicles. And for the firefighters working for the fire department. With that said, next item is an executive session. Entertain a motion to move into an executive session on the M G L chapter thirty. A section twenty-one little A. To discuss the strategy with respect to litigation. We're discussing the matter in open meeting without a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body. And to consider the purchase exchange lease of value of real property where an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. And to adjourn from executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, okay, move for a roll call vote.
Mister George.
Yes.
Mister Gallagher.
Yes.
Doctor Perry.
Yeah.
Mister Chase.
Yes.
Mister Rushton.
Yes.
Mister Suzo.
Yes.
Mister Moore.
Yes.
Mister Wood. And Mister Columb, Mister Columbotes.
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you.
Let me just get everybody out.
Michael, while we're waiting, is it possible to pull up the?
How about we stop the recording?
Yep, hold on.
Yeah, it's nothing crazy. Just getting asked them to do.